Good morning, everyone. It is 10:30. Couple of minutes passed. I'd just like to thank Ms. Sinclair for preparing the operating, the capital budget for us this morning. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. So first item on the agenda is for the receipt and the adoption of the agenda items for special council meeting for budget purposes. May I have a mover? Counselor Arneson and a seconder. Counselor Lung. I'll now call the question. All those in favor carries unanimously. So first item on the agenda. Oh, next item is for council to receive the presentation by staff regarding the 2020 draft capital budget. May I have a mover? Counselor Whitmarsh seconded by Counselor Arneson. Mr. Backen. Oh, sorry. Okay, shall I put your speaker on? I have your speaker on.
It's just the presentation.
It's just the presentation. The minutes of, it was on the minutes of the previous session that I had questions on, but I think that's on the afternoon meeting.
Okay, so, Mr. Backen, do you have any comments?
That's correct. I think we're going to be receiving the minutes in the afternoon meeting that will start around 2:30 as a target time.
Okay. All right, so I guess we can get started.
Madam Chair, thank you again. And a special thank you to both, well, all of the finance team, but especially to Karen and Sam, who worked very diligently on the weekend to update the presentation. Just as a reminder, the journey continues today. This is loosely the second part of probably a three-part series as we go forward. Again, the expectations from today are not to have any motions other than to continue to advance this process to future meetings where we can actually make some decisions. We're still in the education frame, framework, I guess I would say, and trying to revisit some previous concepts and as well to illuminate some of the things that have happened in the last year and what we think will happen in the next year. In that regard, then, we are very mindful of the comments that are being made at the table, though they actually do help us try to reform things and to take a bit of Karen's thunder as we go through this process. She'll begin to outline options, I think, that at the very end that will show us, I guess, one way we're looking at it, but there's many other ways to look at it. I didn't want council to see that section and think, oh, that's where we're focusing at. We're looking at that today in terms of some options about reapportioning capital, but that may not be where we go at all. There may be other options council presents to us, because by the third session, we'll hope to get some areas or streams that council wishes to look at, such as revenue enhancements, such as expenditure reduction in some areas from the model that's been presented for you. So we think that will follow a bit naturally and get to somewhere in the ballpark that council would be more comfortable with. And as well, in that process, we may look at some other, either revenue enhancements or revenue or expenditure reductions that would bring us along. I know some of the work that's been done since the last meeting has been done by some of the people in the room, where they've really tried to begin the work of focusing on, okay, which of these items are going to be necessary for health and safety, from a health and safety perspective. A lot of time and energy has went into that as well, and we're making some good progress. That will likely be more fully discussed in the next meeting, however. So I wanted just to confirm that that is continuing as well. And as a reminder, today that we have an early start, a bit of a lunch break, we continue, and then we have our full afternoon session as well with some interesting topics for council to consider, so it will be a bit of a long day. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll put your, I think your speaker's actually on.
Your worship members of council, thank you for this opportunity to present the capital budget this morning. I would like to take this chance to thank the, my support in the room here, who immediately following last, the last council session on the budget, went back to their desks and continued working. And that is one of the, one of the trademarks of a budget process, is it's a live document and it's continuously being refined. And I'll talk a little bit about what some of the, some of the outcomes of that work were. But needless to say, or be it said, that everybody, everybody in this room was tremendous help, and Sam and Carm for doing the legwork and getting it to here is, I have to say thank you to them. So this afternoon, we have the capital budget in front of us. I've been here for eight years at the township, and by far, this is turning out to be one of the more challenging budgets, both on the operating and capital side. And I have seen this before, this, this trend before in other municipalities, and we will get through it. But sometimes it involves some, some difficult topics and questions, and here we go. So here's the overview of today. So we're going to just, for people who might be tuning in for the first time, most of you have seen some of these slides before. We have the finance cycle and budget timeline that we'll, we'll touch upon briefly, the capital funding strategy and ranking guidelines, just a high-level picture of that. We have some items that were referred to the budget process throughout the year. We have a snapshot of the budget bylaw and placeholder budgets that exist. We have a capital summary of the different areas that submit capital budgets, talk a little bit about the funding sources that fund capital budgets. And then finally, we'll go through the project slides and take a look at what is inside funding envelopes and what is outside funding envelopes at this point in time, subject to your review and change. So the finance cycle looks like this. Every municipality starts with a five-year financial plan. From that financial plan, the property tax rates are, are cut and they are, and the user pay utility rates, they are what, fund the expenditures in the five-year financial plan, in the first year of the five-year financial plan, which is the budget. Then all of that, once approved, goes out to procurement and competitive bidding through the purchasing department. Bills come in, invoices come in, and the bills are paid. And then it's reported back through the quarterly reporting, and finally, the annual report. So that's the cycle in a nutshell. The budget timeline is still showing the same as it did last time, with today's capital presentation, budget, more budget and discussion on February 3rd, I believe it's starting at 2:30. And then we do still have the open houses scheduled for the 10th and 11th, but a note there that that still needs to be confirmed, depending on how these sessions go. This is just a high-level, a look at the capital funding strategy. We look at the annual contribution to capital, which operates very much like an operating line item in the operating budget. It's a consistent amount that departments can depend upon as an operating contribution to their capital program. So it tends to fund those kinds of things that, that occur repeatedly year over year. We have reserves and surpluses, which are sort of self-explanatory. We have development funding, which comes from the development community, mostly DCCs, and then strategic borrowing as a last resort. We've added on the capital ranking guidelines this year, we've added the topic of climate at the top, to be kind of on par with critical, in that we, council had a meeting on the climate strategy, and it was decided at that meeting that we would highlight those items that are climate-oriented. And being that it was a climate urgency, it is, it is called climate at the top. So that's, that's that item, and the rest of them are the same from year to year.
Okay, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One from Counselor Richter.
Yes. So I'd like to know if climate has the highest urgency, and if it has the highest urgency, why? Like, is it more important than critical?
In some cases, it might be more, more apt to put them side by side, I would think. Maybe I'll let, Ram, did you want to have a comment on? Most of them are in the engineering area.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I guess, at a high level, the response is that there is connectivity, or there is no mutual exclusivity between these categorizations. In other words, something could be, I guess, categorized in, in both climate as well as other sections or other priorities. So it is not necessarily climate, therefore not critical, or critical, and is not necessarily climate and, and medium. It could be, could be both.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to determine, because I absolutely support climate under risk to health and safety. Health and safety has to be first and foremost, particularly in a budget year like this, where we've got so many competing priorities for the money, and where, in my opinion, a 9.7% tax increase is not sustainable. So, but I just wanted to make sure that when projects come to us with a climate rating, that it is focusing on health and safety. Is that correct?
In most cases, I would say that is correct. If you look from the, the highest level of, of beyond even the township and us signing on to the, the climate crisis that, that we acknowledge by signing on, it, it is definitely health and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, no, I wanted to ask about, I have no problem. I think it's great to create a.
My mic on, thank you. I think it's great to create another category for climate. I think that's great. We did commit to, to declare, I think we acknowledged the emergency as opposed to declare. But I'm tweaked a little bit by risk to health and safety versus a critical transportation project, for example. You kind of seem to be equating them to me. Would that be fair, given the summary here?
I think there could always, there, there will always have to be, at the end of the day, a look at the, the ranking to the township of the townships' projects and the ranking of the climate item at, at a, at a bit of a higher level. So I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an easy answer. I don't think it's climate equals critical, if that's, if that's what everyone's saying. But I think climate, at the highest level, like beyond the township, is definitely all about health and safety, risk to health and safety.
Just one more comment. Sorry, Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting Counselor Woodward. Just one more thing. Council did direct staff to identify climate projects based on the previous historic commitments to, to taking action in terms of climate. So as, as Karen said, and I tried to say, maybe not, not very well, the last time, there is no necessary connection, connection or connectivity between climate and, and how we have historically categorized other projects. It's just because of council direction, we have identified each one of the climate items separately, as a separate category, which could relate to either critical, high, medium, or low.
Okay, that clarifies it a little bit more. So I, I think for me, I, I want to understand why we would want to communicate to the public that a climate change item in the budget is equivalent to a critically needed transportation project.
I think probably what may, would have made this slide better is if I had drawn a bold, solid line underneath climate and left the other four categories as themselves. So recognizing that we're, we've, I tagged some projects as climate, and, but we have still the projects in our own infrastructure that are critical, that, that need to be done. So I, I don't, I don't, I didn't mean to say that every climate project is critical.
Critical to risk to health and safety.
At the highest level, one would argue that it is, like at the world level, but at the township level, I think you'll, we'll find some items tagged climate that will be in hard competition with some of our own close-to-home.
Maybe, maybe we can pull out a couple of examples when you get into some of the capital sheets, that we can discuss this a little bit more. But I, I wanted to highlight that, is that it's not that I don't support, I mean, I supported them by voting for these targets, but again, there was no, there was not one iota of information about what we were actually committing to in terms of real dollars. And to see it labeled as a health and safety item in terms of global climate change, you mentioned the global scope, what would be the township of Langley's emissions be compared to India and China, for example? Yeah, so I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this upfront discussion regarding climate change, because I do recognize that for most local governments, such as ourselves, I would call it an emerging issue, where there's a lot of discussion about it, but perhaps not enough tangible data or information about the nature of the projects that could be accomplished. So risk to health and safety, in some ways, I think what we will be able to do later on, when we have more information about some of the projects that are being considered, if you look at them as a discrete item, would be in what way that has implications for the township. Because what I want to do is to connect those projects to something that's going to save us money in the longer term. To me, there's an equally strong argument to be made for the economic side of the discussion. Global climate change is problematic in some sense, because it's an abstract, an existential notion. However, it does have a concrete budget line for all of the different things that we are anticipating if we fail to take any action. So I just want to put that out there as another way to analyze why we're looking at this specifically, and why, I'm not ranking it either as, you know, critical or must-have, but I also noted, when you look through all of the different categories in the binder, that there are some that, I understand we asked for, if staff believes it's climate-related, that we should label it as such. But there are ongoing initiatives that the township has wanted to fund, and has always been a budget line item, such as bicycling network, that's now under the category of climate. So I just want to point that out. This is not something new in and of itself, it's just a different way to couch why staff has put that relevance in there to connect it to climate change.
Counselor Lung.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, this, this term, health and safety, kind of got interjected, I think, at our last set of meetings, where some of us on council might feel that, you know, to keep the tax increases down, there has to be some kind of health and safety risk, some kind of a, a line that you have to cross or something. But I might remind council that many others on council and many, many taxpayers look at the health of a community more than just a risk or falling light or something. They look at the health of a community in, in terms of vibrancy and things that we can offer as a council and as a, as a government. So it's a little bit rhetorical in here, so I just want to frame that, that it doesn't necessarily, in my mind, have to be a health risk for something to be funded in the, in the, in the budget, or a safety risk. There's also other definitions of health, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you. I wanted to say, I wanted to continue the discussion regarding this, this item, and I agree with what's been somewhat said, is that we do need data, and we do also need to determine how we're going to proceed, and how every other community relates differently, I think, to climate, climate action. I think that's a given. It also depends on where you sit within the country, the region, the province, et cetera. I, I also say that, you know, regarding risk to health and safety, and also projects, and how successful we can be with applying for grants, applying for partnerships with other organizations and things like that, either the province, or the private sector, or either philanthropists that want to get involved. This is a high-level discussion. I think it's fairly new is, is going out and asking people to contribute and help where in other ways in the past they wouldn't. And, you know, I still want to beat my drum, I always beat it every budget, and the fact that, you know, we still have to have proper garbage collection. We still have to collect garbage off our streets, and I know we have a, an army of volunteers that go around, and, you know, I guess I'm one of them, that, that adopt the street, adopt the park, and things like that, where, you know, that's still a challenge, even though we're in the 21st century, people unfortunately throw garbage, or it comes out of vehicles or otherwise. And that's, an aesthetic thing, it's still important. It's also important still to plant trees and maintain our parks and, and other things. And I guess that is, again, something, I'm not sure if it fits in this area, as, as you said, bike paths and things, but it's very, very important that, you know, we maintain and continue with our existing services, and also reach out to those that can help us with this, because it's not an easy thing, and it's expensive. And let's be, let's be honest, I think we need help with this. Thank you.
Counselor Richter.
Thanks. I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to share an observation with, with council that Metro is embarking on now, under the guidance of the new Metro CAO. And what he's decided to do is to look at all their projects through a climate action lens. So it's a perspective, one of the perspectives that's used to judge and rate projects. And as an example, the new tertiary, the North Shore tertiary treatment, sewer treatment plant, was a legislative obligation, so that it's a critical. But there was no obligation for us to go from secondary to tertiary. Metro Board chose to go tertiary as a result of climate action, because of the impact of not being tertiary on the marine wildlife, and, and the shorelines, and the potential safety to the population served. So if, instead of thinking of climate as a separate category, and think of it as a lens through which we should be looking at all the projects, that might be a better approach for us to consider taking going forward. And maybe staff would like to talk more to the Metro staff about how they're doing it.
Thank you. Counselor Lung.
Yeah, thanks. Just to pick up on that, we also have our sustainability charter, which used to be in the, in the, in the front of our packages all the time. I don't know if it's still there on digital, I don't seem to be able to find it. But we use that as a lens for many, many years here at the council table, and we were one of the first to develop such a charter in municipalities. So that should be a lens that we look through as well, and maybe I can get a copy.
All right. Okay. This next slide, I'm going to give a preliminary comment before we, before I turn to it. In the last council meeting that we had, we heard comments requesting us to identify whether projects were of a safety nature or not. And so one of the things staff did between the last budget session, the operating session, and this session, is they got together and they tried to identify in the areas of transportation, roads, storm, parks, recreation, and IT, I believe, and one, one project in Corbin Men. Another piece of information for you to receive for the budget. So I would, I would like to put out there that this isn't necessarily a high, necessarily a hierarchy, it just allows you to see the motive of why some products were included, under what motive, was it health and safety? Was it a council priority? Was it stewardship of our assets, which professionals are hired to take a look at? So it helps to, or was it partial grant funding? So this is another piece of information, and I would, I would offer that these aren't in any kind of hierarchical order, they're just another piece of information to help inform the, the reason for the inclusion of the item in the, in the capital budget. So this is the, you'll, the new categories that you'll see on those areas that I listed. So health and safety, projects that are required to address matters of public health and safety, with consequence of inaction reasonably anticipated to result in infrastructure failure, with significant impact to public health and safety. Council, projects that have been identified by council as a priority, or have previously been endorsed by council, or have been approved by council through adoption of a supporting bylaw or policy. Stewardship, projects that are necessary for cost-effective maintenance of infrastructure and provide future benefits by extending the life of an asset, or projects that are expected to generate future revenues or public benefit. Grant funding, projects that are funded in part by external grants, eligibility criteria which typically requires council resolution of matching funds or specified portion of overall costs, as a municipal contribution to the project. Other, projects that are funded from other sources, such as development cost charges or non-refundable deposits. And then finally, parks is the department, only department that used a category called environmental. So we tried to add this category to those areas that I, that I listed as another piece of information to help support this, this process. With some examples on the right-hand column. So this is a list we do every year of items referred to the budget process, and what and where they are. The first item is the LED streetlight program. That was a report to council in 2019, and council endorsed the implementation strategy for the replacement of the high-pressure sodium street lighting fixtures throughout the township. So this one is included on page 245 is the project sheet, if you wanted to take a look at that. The project is included in the 2020 budget with debt as a proposed funding source, and the debt payment can be made from the savings and energy costs that will be associated with this project. So it's a, one goes down, one goes up scenario, so there's no impact on the property tax rate for that.
A question from Counselor Lung.
Ninety-three grand that we're saving, is that 93? Whatever the number is, we're actually coming ahead, are we not?
Yeah, payment, yes, correct.
So that goes into council contingency fund, doesn't it?
It could.
Counselor Richter.
Okay, well, on something like this, the question that I would go back to is, because I see we're funding it with debt, the 4.3 million that we're putting into this program, is it more important that we put it into this program or into some other program? Because it's 4.3 million, that's a big chunk of change. So how, is it just because staff sent a report to council and council endorsed the report, we're saying this is a priority?
I think it would probably, it's falling under council and stewardship are, are the informers there on the bottom. So I would say definitely part of it is that it was a report brought to council, because staff thought it was a good idea, but the idea that they brought it to council, sorry, was from a steward, stewardship perspective. So their professional opinion is that this is, this is the way municipalities are going, we can go this way, and we can actually pave our way in going this way. So that's how they, how they brought it forward on both a council and a stewardship.
Okay, but in the context of all the projects that are on these lists, is this one more important than another one? So I'd like to flag it for future discussion.
Madam Chair, I think it should be flagged, because it does, it does lead to an assumption, and that is that those, those items that are, I guess, either self-funding, or have funding from other agencies, are given a higher priority by staff in going through it, because it doesn't lead to the financial challenges. But it's quite correct to say that the financial challenges may be such that the money could be spent elsewhere, even though the revenue would have to be taken from another source, such as another project, another program, or from future revenues, or something of that nature.
Okay. Counselor Lung.
Talking about climate action right out of the gate here, we're talking about saving thousands of dollars' worth of electricity, never mind the, the burden on the planet to create that electricity. So maybe if we're going to flag it, I don't know why we would, it's a fabulous project, I wouldn't mind knowing how many gigawatts, or whatever the, the term is, of power we'll be saving, as well as in terms of efficiency, using the LED lights. I mean, everybody's put them in their homes, it's a no-brainer, right? Never mind the labor that, to change the bulbs every couple of weeks.
And the next item referred to the budget process is one called intersection improvements at 56th Avenue and 240th. This is on page 264, if you'd like to look at the project sheet. That consideration of a traffic light at 240th Street and 56th Avenue be referred to the 2020 budget discussions. And this item has been tagged council and health and safety.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, now, how much do we need for this? 1.2 million.
Yeah, it's currently 1.2.
So if we didn't do the 4.3, we could fund this absolutely critical health and safety issue for people trying to get off 240th, with all the Abbotsford traffic that's streaming along 56th Avenue.
True, very, very true, in terms of the capital expenditure. The difference is that the previous program would fund itself, so by actually taking the other project away, does not create any funds to fund this, other than our overall debt envelope. This would need to have some funding associated with it, which could be located in many locations. But, but the, the point we were simply making was the other one is self-funding. Whether this goes ahead or that goes ahead, it doesn't affect the bottom line, in that the lights would require, could be self-funded from savings, where this would simply require external funding.
Oh, I'd like to flag this one too, please.
Strategic borrowing plan. So this, this is one, whereas council is considering many different new expenditures to meet the service needs of a growing community, and these expenditures will be expensive, be it resolved that council asked staff to develop and bring forward a strategic borrowing framework as part of the 2020 budget process, and further be it resolved that this borrowing framework report or memorandum include a list of prioritized expenditures for council consideration. So for the 2020 budget process, this has not been able to be accomplished by the finance department. So it's a, it's a large project that involves starting with a, a long-term capital plan, so we will have to work on that between now and next year. There's three items, there's a strategic borrowing framework, there's the financial sustainability review, and the long-term funding strategy, which are all intermingled and will all require a, a long-term capital plan in the various areas to, to accomplish.
Okay, I have one question from Counselor Richter.
Okay, so I note in the memo that you sent us with the capital package on page three, there's a number of strategic property acquisitions, which include a future fire hall, a satellite operations center, a facility expansion, road widens, connectors, major corridor enhancements, detention ponds, floodplain mitigation, a fill site, and contamination mitigation. I would think if all of these are on the plate for us to be considering, we should be considering within a strategic borrowing framework. So all those items listed on page three, if we're not going to have a strategic borrowing framework for the 2020 budget process, then we should just be taking these right off the table.
Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you.
I concur with Counselor Richter. I'm, I'm afraid I was audible when I was shaking my head at this idea that all this novel borrowing for, what are, I, I don't argue that these are important projects to go forward, but it seems to me, based on what Mr. Backen has said, and what we've just heard today about this being a challenging budget, to put forward these extraordinary expenditures without a strategic borrowing framework is putting the cart before the horse. You know, I, I don't understand what our prospects would be if we are looking at a 2020 budget that includes those items, and then after the fact, we are setting up a strategic borrowing framework. So that seems completely illogical to me, that we would consider doing that. So I think that what we need to do is to be a little retroactive and look at some of these implications without a framework, so we can better understand what it is that we are creating for our longer-term debt and our debt management strategy overall. So I agree, we should be flagging some of these items to see whether or not they should be considered in part of this 2020 budget preceding a framework.
I'm sorry.
Just, just to follow up on that, I think it's a very good point. I think what you're, I guess the analogy I would use is it's not so much the cart before the horse, as instead trying to get the, the. before the horse, as instead trying to get the, the tethers and the saddles on the horses before we actually take off out of the, out of the gate. What we're looking at here is trying to start the process by actually beginning to review the strategic, I guess, priorities, land acquisition items, if you will, that would be necessary going forward. We're focusing on a five-year horizon and that means that while they, they could be included in 2020, most likely they'd be included sometime post-2020, so we'd have a more fulsome look at what would be possible to, to fund. But we think that understanding those priorities or initiatives would be important to council as we start going through this process. So it's not intended to lead to a conclusion per se, but other to give council a heads-up that A, the work has started and B, it's underway. Now, it's also very true that when we look at that list of items, it may be you see something that is, that is from a policy perspective more important than we originally anticipated and that may warrant the discussion in 2020. But it's, it's not intended to put the cart before the horse merely to start the, the process to put the saddles and the reins on the horse before it takes off out of the barn.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, on this same point, this strategic borrowing plan, is, is this directly linked to the items that councillor Richter identified in the document on land acquisition or is that, is, or is there other items or there really is no items considered in this strategic borrowing plan?
The items that councillor Richter listed would be, would be the, the seed item, the seed projects for a strategic borrowing framework, but we would need to also consider items that are currently in what would be considered our traditional regular year-to-year capital, capital program for projects that we aren't able to accommodate just from our regular sources, like the annual contribution to capital. So those definitely, those projects would be the seed of this, this larger framework, but it, it definitely needs to consider as well other things that, that we'll be looking at as we go through the unfunded items today that would have to be all brought together.
Right, okay, so this, this, what's, what's suggested here is to develop a strategic borrowing plan with no real dollars attached to it. It's just putting a, a plan in place as part of the 2020 budget process, but the dollars for it are really going to be into budgets beyond 2020. Is that how I understand it?
That, that's how it will, that's how it will work out. Yeah, yeah. We're starting, so we would start the process with this budget as being the sort of anchor tenant of that process and then move forward.
With the added complication however, that we have many funding streams for some of these projects. For example, some are DCCs, some are utilities, some could be CACs and we, we say that with a big qualification. And then there's going to be the regular budget funding itself. So it becomes very complicated very quickly, but I think we simply wanted to make note that there is something here that's been referred to the budget process. Work has begun, but it will take a bit of time.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
Yes, thank you. I, I guess I have to be cautious in my words right now. Yeah, I think that we have a workshop coming February, I guess, third with Mr. McIntosh. And I heard a few minutes ago, things like incomprehensible court, cart behoard the horse, information not provided and all sorts of other things. I guess my question to staff would be, do you, and we have a motion here, which is bona fide motion, do you not have existing a way of recording and responding to capital needs, financial needs and other needs within your department?
We do, however, this, this is a large project. It is more than we could accomplish between when it was recommended and now. So October of 2019 was when this item came up in the council priority setting sessions of last year. We were already underway in creating this budget document that we have today. We have four and a half vacancies in our department, which has been an ongoing challenge, but it has been not something we've been able to get ahead of in, in a big way, other than knowing that this budget process was going to be tackling some of the large items that we're going to be foreseeing in that program as we move forward. So this seemed like a logical way to, to kick the process off and get it started.
Okay, well, there's nothing logical to me about this. My question to you is, I mean, you have a great department, you have great staff, you're existing, you're, is this really needed? And I think council, this council has to determine if this is a project that we need to proceed with or whether we have the necessary staff in place just to go on as, as we are ongoing, on an ongoing basis. This is my 22nd budget, I've never seen anything like this come up before. We've had long-term financial plans, we've had our budgets go on a daily, on a yearly basis, we've gone through departments, we've had RCMP, we've had fire, we've gone through all sorts, and there's never been a problem that way. So now, all of a sudden, after all these years, there's some kind of a problem and a need to go this way? And I think this is something this council needs to look at. Do we want to go at this miniscule level, go item by item, line by line? Are we happy with what we have right now, which I'm happy? When this motion was made and we considered it, I was under the impression that it would be business as usual and that you didn't have to spend extra time, extra resources and raise taxes to do it. I mean, I'm not a big believer, so I know, Madam Chair, if we can put this on our February the 3rd workshop with Mr. McIntosh, because all of a sudden it's ended up being a, a council priority now rather than anything else. So that's, I'm not sure if the administration has any comments on that or, or they just want to leave it, if I may.
Mr. Backen.
No, that, that's correct. At the, the, we'll call it the workshop on February the 3rd is kind of an open session in terms, in terms of topics. We can communicate that to Mr. McIntosh as a, it being a topic to be reviewed, but I believe he's also talking to most members of council independently, so if that hasn't occurred, that certainly can be part of that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Richter.
Yeah, well, Mr. McIntosh already went through a borrowing session with us back in, when was it, October, November, where it was quite clear that things have to be looked at a little differently. And, and I can't reiterate enough that this budget, to me, represents us with our backs against the wall. The cupboard is bare. We're talking a potential 9.7% tax increase in the same year where we've undertaken $86 million in new debt. Last meeting, Mr. Backen prefaced his comments by saying it's going to take us 1, 4.12% just to keep the lights on this year. And I hate to go back to the light analogy, but maybe we have to get rid of the lights that we have, put in LED lights, change the wiring system. We have to start looking at doing things differently because these budgets with our backs against the wall are not good budgets and the process as it's been working is no longer working. Think about it. 9.7% tax increase on top of $86 million in new debt, on top of all the growth we've had. We just can't, we can't keep functioning like this. I'm sorry, we've got to start doing things differently.
Can we flag this item, please?
Yeah, it is, it's flagged.
All right, thank you.
An item referred to the budget process is the Township of Langley ASED Arts, Sports and Entertainment District conceptual plans and preliminary drawings for the development of such a facility. And that one is showing as unfunded on page 41. Another item referred to the budget process is the Murrayville, the issue of the Murrayville Water. We talked about this in the operating budget in that we had 1.4 million dollars included as a one-time for water purchases and this would be in the first year 2020 to, while the engineering department is working on this, this larger issue of the Murrayville Water situation. So we do have it budgeted for, it, it, it is a capital project in its nature, so I've included it as items referred to the budget process, but it had, the 1.4 million has been funded on the operating side from, from surplus. Intersection 28th Avenue and 272nd Street, this item was to be referred to the budget process. This project is not currently included in the 2020 capital budget. It was referred as an item for discussion. There was a council report last year about it and so I put it forward in front of you here, but it hasn't been developed into a project yet.
Have councillor Long.
Yeah, well, this one, I, I was going to bring up this when we talked about 240th and 56th, because if you compare the two in terms of safety and health, I see this one as being critical because you have young, young children crossing the street, whereas at 240th, you may have to wait for a minute to get your vehicle across. So I guess, how does that get weighed and when, and I kind of regret, I suppose, the wording of the motion that came to council, which I think was unanimously adopted, when we feel we're referring something to the budget discussions, I guess we should really be saying to the budget discussions above the line. Because it, you know, what qualified 240th to get above the line versus this one, and I don't remember all the discussions, but how do we get this above the line? I guess flagging it is one way. But I think we were unanimous in, in getting this intersection looked at. And if it's not going to be funded, then we have to make some other plan with the school district because the kids are still crossing the road. So what's, when we flag these things, what does that mean?
Yeah, it means that we'll, we'll definitely consider them when we, when we get to the issue of funding projects that are not currently funded. So if this is one of those, it would just, it would just be one of those projects that we consider when we're looking at other sources of funding.
Whenever we say flag it, that's, you're making the list.
Correct. And just the recommendation on this one was that council receive the intersection of 28th Avenue and 272nd Street for information, but in the, in the body of it, it does say to be included as part of the 2020 budget for council consideration. So it's not that it be included as funded, but...
But it's not included in the budget, so why is that?
It's included for council consideration, it wasn't, yeah, it hasn't been included in the budget at this stage, just for your, it was, because it was just received for information, it's coming forward, just...
But I'm, I'm confused, Madam Chair. If it says that the motion was to include it in the budget...
No, the motion wasn't, sorry. That's what I was, that's the point I was trying to make. The motion was just that council receive it. It was in the body, the narrative that the discussion included a comment about referring it for further discussion. Yeah.
Flagged. Councillor Woodward.
I was just going to add to that. So maybe I'll pay more attention to some of these referral motions in the future as well. But I think the confusion here is fund what? So I mean, I recall some memos from staff, maybe one or two on this, on some specific options to change the configuration of that intersection. I recall some, I recall some sort of range of numbers to do that. So I think it's a matter of me or councillor Long or someone else going and finding that, getting it back up to speed on that and then either making a motion to add it to the budget or not and, but specifically try to itemize for us what exactly you think is the best configuration there, councillor Long, thanks.
Another item, 24th Avenue, 196th Street to 200th. Council refer the matter of funding design and construction of 24th Avenue between 196th and 200th to the budget process to facilitate opening the road.
Discussion, just kidding. I do have a question from councillor Richter.
Yeah, so there's no status on this, so is it, has it been funded? Is it not funded?
Sorry, this one is, is item referred to the 2021 budget process as the top of the slide says.
2021.
Yes, sorry, my mistake.
Do you delete that for the 2021 budget, please? Do you need a motion for that?
Why do you want to delete it? It's not this year's budget.
Not until the Brookswood-Fernridge plan's in place.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Sorry, just a, a question on that. When we, when we refer this to the budget process, did, did we refer this to the 2021 budget process? Is that what happened? I thought we referred the designing of the, and planning to the 2020 budget.
We were able to find funding for some of the upfront design in the 2019 budget, so some money was allocated from another project to this in 2019. So the, the design part has gotten start, has been started and then the idea is that the balance of it will start in 2021.
Oh, okay, so during, during the year of 2020, the project, the design is moving on?
Yes.
With 2019 money?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
I'm always big on trivia today, is that Surrey on their side, it would be about 195, they already blocked the road in two areas, so Surrey has no, does not want to open the road as well.
Just, thank you, Madam Chair, just for council's information, the referral, I wouldn't presume to, to, I guess, try and guess what may have resulted in a motion to refer it to the 2020 or 2021 budget, but just to confirm the funding, there is no funding request or requirement for the road to open. The funding is actually part of the 2021 budget process to undertake some development-coordinated works, if you will, some design work and some development-coordinated works to make sure that there's a sewer system that is needed, that goes in and, and we are able to coordinate other works with that. So to allow the road to, to open, there is no funding request or requirements.
Councillor Richter. No, okay, I'm just going to clear the key here. All right, thank you.
So this is heading into some of the numbers in the capital budget. We have a carry-forward program, which is at a very similar level to 2019, a little bit higher. You can see the two columns side by side, new requests within the funding envelope, 893.9 last year, 138.6 this year, but the asterisk is just identifying that of that 138.6, 67.67 of it is the, the large land assembly purchase. So it's actually down this year without that large land assembly. Placeholder budgets have gone up a little bit and contributed assets are, are being held the same. As, with respect to items outside the funding envelope, it's actually a little bit lower this year than it was last year and we'll be getting into that detail as we move forward from here.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, sorry, I, I actually had a question with, with regards to items referred to budget process before we go on this slide. I, I just can't remember, so maybe I just need to be reminded, but I know in last year's budgeting process, we talked also about signaling at 96th and Glover Road. And I don't recall what happened, but I, my recollection was that that, the signaling was being moved to the 2020 budget, but I don't know if that's correct or what happened to that. Maybe it is funded and I may have missed it, but I, I wanted to just double-check.
I don't recall the specifics, Ms. Hyker, do you recall? It's DCC-funded, so it's probably not being highlighted as such, councillor Whitmarsh.
Okay, that, that's fine, I just missed it, thank you.
Yeah, it is, it is there. It's page 246.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Woodward.
Thank you. You mentioned, I just want to make sure I have my notes correct, you mentioned that design for upgrades, maybe you can clarify exactly, design or other work for opening 24th was funded from 2019 reallocations?
Correct.
So can you explain, can you explain that a little bit more, how that process works? Because I don't, that didn't come to council, that was just funded?
So there's a, some budget, budget buckets that engineering has, they're like annual sewer infrastructure, annual transportation infrastructure, and this one was pulled out of that, one of those sort of more generic budgets to do the preliminary work on this. Do you remember which one, Denise?
I think it might have been the DCC program.
Oh, okay. So in this particular case, it would have been the annual DCC coordinated works.
Okay, I'll ask a bit more about that if I feel, thank you.
This is, this is a representation of those prior numbers and just by area, by capital area. So you'll see the same numbers on the bottom across the current year and previous year. What's relevant here, can just see the breakdown in the individual departments, you can see under corporate administration, the large jump from 2.5 million to 68 is the land assembly. What else is large? Everything else?
I have a question from councillor Ferguson.
Oh yeah, going back to that 96th and Glover, on page 246 of our capital, it says new money request for this year is 450,000.
And I think that's split between general revenue and DCCs if I'm not mistaken. 445,500 from DCCs and 4,500 from operating revenue.
So it is a project for this year, although it's coming out of DCCs?
Correct.
Operating revenue, is that DCC as well?
No, operating revenue is the, a portion of the annual contribution to capital. It's an operating, operating contribution to capital.
Councillor Richter.
Yeah, I just had a question, is this millions or thousands of dollars?
This here?
Yeah.
This is millions.
Millions, so we're talking 375 million.
Yeah.
Opposed to 318. In a year where we're really strapped with operating because of all the salary adjustments that are needed, why are we increasing our capital 18%? why are we increasing our capital 18%?
Uh, well, the increase that that largely is causing that increase is the, is the borrowing. So it's not, it's not, it's, the large chunk is the 67 million dollars in borrowing. So that 67 million isn't, isn't impacting the, on the cap, on the operating side. It was the one where we had the debt servicing related to that borrowing was offset from our transfer to the capital infrastructure renewal and replacement reserves. So there was no, no increase, increase related to that on the tax side.
Okay, but there's 18% of new funding in here, 56.6 million. What's driving that? Is, is that just the, that's, that can't be the debt cost?
Sixty-seven point six seven is the debt cost. The rest of it is projects funded from DCCs, projects funded from grant funding and translink, projects funded from reserves. When we get into the project sheets, you'll see the funding sources across the top and it might give a bit better indication as to-
Okay, but I guess where I'm coming from is we already know we need 4.12 minimum-
Yep.
To keep the lights on. Why are we spending 56.6 million more on the capital side than we did last year? Why wouldn't we be holding the line on the capital side?
Projects that the departments identified are required?
Karen, I think you, you might have duplicated something there. So what I heard you say was, first of all, that our actual capital spending was down, but for the larger capital projects, the land acquisitions. If we took the land acquisitions out, then that would be putting us back a little bit. But it was a prudent policy decision then to look at trying to acquire the strategic land assets. So then I think, I thought I heard you say that you changed gears there a little bit in terms of, well, no one's stuff that the divisions thought was necessary. So I think what you're saying is that we could look at reducing an already reduced capital program. That would be one option, but we're trying to envelop some of the land, strategic land acquisitions we've already committed to. Is that fair?
Yeah, if we, if we remove the seventy, call it 70 million from this year's, it, it would be slightly less than last year. So with respect to something that is an extraordinary item, the 67.67 project to borrow, and the other one, yeah, that's the one actually. If we took that 67 out of the 375, we would be just slightly less, less than the previous year.
So borrowing the money to buy that land has increased our budget by 18% this year?
It's showing up as a capital project.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodward?
Fantastic capital project, too, I might add. For me, I had a question about the numbers that you're presenting overall today. I think I should have asked it earlier. So some confusion on my part in regards to the operating budget that was presented a week ago, where a bunch of other items, I think about four or five million, were, were not included in the 4.12. And then when I got this on Friday, I was trying to figure out whether or not this is being presented, assuming that those are in the budget versus not in the budget. Do you understand what I'm getting at, right? That those contributions to capital, which are currently unfunded as of last week, are they included in these summaries, assuming that they are funded?
So the contribution to capital, that is what we call our base contribution to capital. And that was the contribution that was approved in 2019. We roll that forward to 2020. We didn't add anything to it. And we're using that base contribution to capital amount of 8.9 million dollars to, to fund capital. That's, that's the piece that impacts the operating side. The line item that is called operating contribution to capital of 8.9 million.
So when I look at this number from last week, infrastructure contribution to capital, and it added up to 1.35, that was, as of last week, was not included in the 4.12, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so is, are-
Those were additional, same thing.
Are these contributions included in the numbers you're presenting today? They're not. Okay, so we're, we're still operating from the same 4.4% baseline?
Yes.
And then looking at what we'll find in addition to that baseline?
Correct. If those items are in further discussions, additional discussions, if those items are agreed to be approved, then we would be going back to some of the unfunded projects and funding them.
Okay, so when I look in the capital budget and I see projects funded, they're not in this bucket. They're in the carryforwards. Is that correct?
Yeah, carryforwards or, or base, the, the-
Base budget request.
Base budget for, for contribution to capital.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
Oh, no, I must have hit the, sorry.
So this is just a little bit of a discussion on the placeholders and what they mean. So the parkland acquisition is a placeholder budget that we have. As, as part, pieces, parcels of parkland come available during the year, we have a budget envelope that has DCCs behind part of it and neighborhood, neighborhood reserve, neighborhood parkland reserve behind the other part of it. So this one is totally funded from those two sources, parkland DCCs and neighborhood parkland. And there, and there has to be adequate development cost charges in order for us to move ahead with something that might be identified. So this would be where a park gets, a piece of property is identified during the year that staff says this would be a great park. And they, and they want to move to buy it. That, this is the budget line item that provides the authority to do that. And, and all of these line items are just that. They're providing authority to do something. It's sort of an opportunity fund. It's not, it, some, some of these line items don't have money behind them. It might be for grants, the unidentified externally funded projects. You guys have seen reports recently about grant funding that's come in. In order for us to bring that legally into the budget as a budget expenditure, we have to bring the grant revenue in. So we use that line item, unidentified externally funded, to bring grant revenue that we don't know today that might show up during the year. The land going up to number two, the land capital reserve, that's one that we've typically had as a, as a budget provision. It's usually been anywhere between 10 and 20 million over the last five years. And it is now the one that is in a deficit position, so we're no longer using that one until it sort of reestablishes itself. Right below that, we've added, this is a new one, land capital provision funded from borrowing. And this is if we come upon a piece of land that we decide we have, we, the opportunity is there to buy it and it makes sense and it's a good property purchase, this would give us some, in this particular case, I think 15 million is funded from borrowing and 4 million is funded from-
Five million.
From other. So this is, again, another opportunity fund should, if, if, if a piece of land comes up for buying.
Okay, just have a couple of questions. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I'm not quite following the difference between parkland acquisition and land capital provision. I mean, theoretically, we spent 67.7 million in new borrowing or new debt in order to buy parkland. So why isn't that coming out of parkland acquisition, which says there must be adequate development cost charge funds?
Some of it did. Close, I believe it's close to half. I'm going by memory. But quite a bit of it did come out of parkland to be funded from DCCs. And then the other component came out of general revenue, the part that was not parkland. There was an analysis done, how much, how many acres were parkland and a value assigned to that? And that was funded from development cost charges.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if there's a definition for the word adequate. I'm not sure what that means exactly. Is that a certain percentage of the funding must come from DCCs? Or what does that mean by adequate?
Well, in this particular case with the land capital reserve, adequate is, is a little bit subjective. When it has been to different degrees, negative. So it's been in a deficit to different degrees. I went back to see how far I could go back to see if it had come up. And it has, it's not since I could find the records has it been in the positive. But, so we've, we've used it as sort of a borrow now and then pay it back over land sales. So we've used it to buy upfront and then pay back over land sales. So I think what I'm saying is, right now, it's uncomfortably large. And I don't think we should use it anymore until we get some land sales come in and bring it back up. And so adequate, it's a very subjective term. It could be a policy term, but it isn't a policy term right now. Right now, it is subjective.
Right, okay, because you were using the word adequate in, in land capital reserve, parkland acquisition, which is sort of adequate development cost charges, for example, in parkland. And just, is there a certain percentage of DCCs that are used to fund parkland that, or it has to be? Or we don't have a policy around that? It's just-
No, I think, I would like to say, though, that the land capital reserve is the only, the only reserve that we've, that we've gone, bought the land and drawn to a deficit first and then brought, brought back up. Sorry, I've done that multiple times today. The other reserves, I, I think adequate would reflect a positive balance. So we have never gone under, underwater on the other reserves. We've always, for the, for example, for the DCCs for parkland. I get a call from our property manager and our parks manager to say, I have this opportunity. What, what are our parkland DCCs look like? And we calculate them to the day and we say, you either have enough money or you don't have enough money. If they don't have enough money, they might not do it, or they might negotiate an agreement with the person who's selling it. Or we might look at another funding source and bring it to council and say, this is how we plan to fund this. But we haven't gone into the negative in any of our other, other reserves related to the word adequate. So I would say adequate just reflects positive.
Positive, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I think I was gonna ask about the land reserve when we get to a couple of slides from now. So I can leave some of those questions about how it's in a deficit and why it's in a deficit. But while we're here with the placeholder budget authority, this is helpful, the five categories. But as an example, in the facilities capital project sheet, page 27, there's a placeholder there, unidentified externally funded projects, 10 million. Which category is that in in this slide?
That's the, the second from the bottom, unidentified externally funded projects.
Okay, so that would make sense. You kind of, it's kind of obvious now that you pointed it out. But here, this is very specific to grant funding, should the township receive funding. So is that in anticipation of a significant grant? And then you don't have to come back to council to get approval to proceed with the project?
No, if we receive significant grant funding, we usually will bring a report to council saying we've received X amount of grant funding. We'd like to bring it into the budget using this. We, there was two, the preapproval of the runway lights at the airport was one that came forward late last year. And there was another, a second one that came forward late last year. So we usually bring those reports, we bring those reports to council to say, this is the funding, the grant funding that we've, that we are able to get. We just need council sign off that you're in agreement. To usually, it's that you're in agreement with us putting the township portion with it. Because in most cases, there's a township portion. But this isn't just limited just to grant funding. Grant funding is the easiest thing to conceptualize. But it could be a private partnership comes along. It, it's just all external funds to the township.
Yeah, so the 10 million is not necessarily township funds. It's fund coming somewhere, somewhere else flowing through the budget.
It's not township funds.
Yeah, using this line item. And the, the line that tweaks me here is this provision can be used to provide expenditure authority. So you were talking about the fact that you don't have to go back and modify the budget, not necessarily spend the money without council approval.
So in some municipalities, what they'll do is that they, they won't provide much in the way of placeholders and they will come back to council and request a budget amendment every time there's something like this. We use placeholder budgets to a certain degree to allow us not to have to bring every item back to council for their, for their decision. If we, if we ever went beyond some of these placeholders, then we would be faced with the potential for a budget amendment as well. But we provide these placeholders for the opportunities that, that could come up.
And so some portion of these placeholders may require matching funds or some other contribution from the township of Langley, which would have to come from another source or a budget amendment? Or be deferred until the following budget? Is that how, would that would work?
It could, yep.
It would have to work that way?
Time wise, yeah.
Because I just want to know for every capital sheet, again, my, only my second budget, not my 25th or whatever that-
Right.
Counselor Ferguson's is. The placeholder that's not identifying any funding set, any cash funding set aside by the township of Langley, that's correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Sorry, I'm just butting in a little late. You were just talking about the land capital reserve and you said it was getting uncomfortably high. Have we ever, we have, have we not, in the last seven or eight years? Transfer, paid it off?
It, it has been down to two, about three, maybe four years ago, it was down to 2.5 million dollars in a deficit. But then with the expenditures that have happened between then and now, it's, it's gotten up to over 30.
Have we ever taken mon, borrowed money and paid it off?
Not, not that I can see, as far back as I've gone.
Okay.
Marked you? No.
Okay.
No, that's correct. But we've come close in terms of our internal, I guess, sales to actually do so. But as Karen mentioned, it ever got it to zero. We haven't borrowed historically and we likely have enough property now that we could greatly, well, I think we could probably even turn it to a positive. But the problem is all those properties have strings attached. For example, they may need rezonings. Our highest and best use could be industrial, which may not be palatable to council in adjacent to a residential area. Those are the details we have to work out, but those details are taking a bit longer than we anticipated. Not only because of that, but because of environmental considerations that now come into play with some of the sites as we see adapting and evolving provincial regulations.
Okay, thank you.
And the contributed, contributed assets is just a funding envelope that we have placed there to bring in the assets that are, are contributed to us from development. They don't reflect us spending any money. It's just assets that the development community turns over to us after the one year of maintenance period. It shows up on our books. It looks like an asset acquisition, so we have the budget authority for that. So these are the funding sources that we'll be talking about over the next few slides. So the operating contribution to capital, the current 2019 operating contribution to capital is the 8.9 million that I've mentioned. That is the, that is the piece that impacts property taxes. So the 2019 level is 8.931, nine, 8,931,900. And so just bringing that forward doesn't do anything to property taxes. Just bringing that forward is, just brings it forward, it's, it's in the base. We can spend it this year like we spent it last year. If we added the 1.8 million that Counselor Woodward referenced, that would increase it by 1.35%. So right now, we've, the projects that we funded in the capital program that you've looked at, that are funded from this operating source is exactly the 8,931. The same is true for water, sanitary sewer and solid waste, only those are user fees that we're looking at. Reserves and surplus, this is a high level list of our reserves. The top of the column, water, sanitary sewer and universal services. Water and sanitary sewer are limited in that they can only be used for those, those, those utilities. And then universal services is the one that is a little bit, a little bit more flexible when the balances are good. And you'll see, I haven't done a projection of operating surplus. We're right in the middle of our year end right now and I typically don't do that because it can go through a lot of change during the year end process. Capital surplus is when projects, Counselor Davis asked this at the last quarterly report. When projects finish and there's money left over, where does it go? This is one of the places it goes. It goes into capital surplus. And now it is available to us for, for funding. Non-statutory reserves, that is a, a list of, a long list of, of reserves, some of which are restricted and some of which are not, but are just small. We have the capital works reserves in the area of roads, storm and parks, water and sewer. And that's that. You can see it's quite low. Land capital is in 34.5 million dollar deficit. And parkland reserve is currently, the neighborhood parkland reserve is currently at 8.3. And that one is restricted. It's the 5% in lieu of parkland that the developers pay. Fire and apparatus and equipment replacement reserve is at 0.7. And that is quite low. And the debt reserve, which is, this last line here has a combination of water and general in it.
Just have a question from Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, this, can we start with debt reserve? 3.5 million for, for what exactly? Just explain to me how that's used and depleted.
So this is a, a bucket that we use when we have, we've budgeted for debt to fund borrowing, but the project either hasn't completed yet. So we have that budget for the debt servicing that we don't need in a given year. So for example, say we have a million dollars in debt servicing and, and the project didn't get finished, so we, we won't need that million dollars. So we transfer that fund, rather than just letting it go to general surplus, we transfer it to the debt reserve. So that when, by the time comes that we have to firm up that debt, we might be able to borrow a little bit less. We can put that million dollar savings towards not borrowing as much. That's the concept.
What happens if that goes to zero? What, what bad things happen?
Then, then we have nothing to bring down the debt. It's not, we, we can't take advantage of that opportunity.
That answers that. So then land, the, the land capital reserve at minus 34.5, just, I mean, I could look it up. Do you roughly know what it was last year? Did we, did we make that situation inferior this year?
It, it came, it's larger.
It's larger. Do you know by how much this, just, I can look it up from last year. I'm kind of curious about how we solve this permanently. Last year, it was shown to us at 33, round number.
Okay, so it's not-
Not too bad.
Yeah. Sorry, I couldn't find it faster.
You can double check that if council wants to get that confirmed by someone other than me. No? Okay, we'll assume it's 33 for this discussion.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, this one is particularly interesting to me. So we have, you know, some members, of the members of the public now who used to serve on council, a little upset about the borrowing, yet they didn't seem to have a problem liquidating the land reserve or rating the land reserve to a deficit of 35 million dollars and then simultaneously declaring to the public that they didn't borrow money. How do we sort of solve this problem where, what are some of our options to get that to a positive number without liquidating land assets?
I do have Mark, Mark Backen, Mr. Backen talked about some options that we'll be talking about as we move forward, but-
In the presentation later on, or is it something?
It's in the presentation later on.
It is. So I can defer the questions if that's coming up later-
Yeah, that would be fine.
On how to deal with this problem sort of once and for all. We could, in theory, as Counselor Davis alluded to, do a, a borrowing by law to borrow the money. Like basically borrow 34.5 and get this back to zero. We could do that?
Yes, we could.
And then that would acknowledge what previous councils have done, which is essentially borrow money without borrowing money. Would that be fair?
We internally borrowed.
We internally borrowed, okay. Um, so, and some of these other ones, the capital works, what, what is, is that restricted in any way?
The capital works is, is, it's a true capital funding reserve. So the, the mechanism of the capital works reserve is that, um, any times, anytime our surplus gets over then, what's called, we have a minimum and maximum for surplus, and it's currently not meeting the minimum. But anytime it gets over, the, the surplus in excess of that level gets transferred to the capital works reserve to fund capital. So it is another capital mechanism funded, um, sort of upfront by surpluses that occur. What we've been doing is with, I, I call it the little red wagon, we've been carrying our surplus behind us, and we've been identifying it to projects. One could argue it's six of one half, a dozen of another. We're funding it, we're funding those projects from prior year surplus instead of letting the prior year surplus grow, go into the capital works reserve, and fund from there. So it, it's just a capital, it's a reserve that has the word capital in it that's meant for capital projects.
That sounds like prior year surplus to me, the way you described it.
The way, the way it builds is from prior year surplus.
Right, so it builds from prior year surplus. So if that went to zero, nothing bad's going to happen?
I believe it does have a minimum, is it five hundred thousand? Sam, do you recall? Yeah. I believe, I believe that there's, there's four capital, four capital works reserves, and I believe they all have a million.
Oh, there's, there's reserves within that, there's multiple reserves?
Well, there's a, there's a transportation, or sorry, general, there's general, there's storm, and there's water and sewer.
Yeah, so you're consolidating all of those, so there's four inside of there. Okay.
We can see the...
So, just as an example, again, trying to understand the process to be helpful, rather than spend time on ideas that won't work. When you magic, remember, I'm sorry, I apologize for doing, but you magically came up with three hundred thousand at the, at the meeting for, to remove one of the items to make it from operating over to prior year surplus, remember that? You moved some of the property acquisitions.
The two hundred and fifty thousand that Mr. Backen identified could be one time.
Could be one time, and it, and it was okay. And then I asked you how much more there was, and you magically appeared with five hundred thousand. Is that coming from this line item? Is that, it's not, so that's, where, where would that have come from?
It, it will come from the, the operating surplus line item that you see up top.
Okay, so you were anticipating prior year surplus that would, that would not make this, because I'm assuming if that goes to zero, you can't, people, there's a cash flow issue, right?
The, the top line?
The universal operating surplus one.
Yes, it has, it has minimums, somewhere significantly below the minimum.
Okay, so when, when we were adjusting prior year surplus at the last meeting, it was coming from there, not capital works, which is something separate.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm looking at... No, there, sorry, I apologize, there are no limits on the capital works reserve. There's no limit. So your question as to if it, what would happen if it went to zero, is it can go to zero. Yep. Now, this number twenty-nine point eight million of non-statutory reserves, we've broken some of the larger ones out here. Um, and some of them are restricted, most of them are actually. So we have the neighborhood parkland reserve, um, which is the five percent cash in lieu coming from developers. Uh, we have the, oh, sorry, I mixed that one up with another parkland reserve on the other page. Um, we have RCMP building reserve at four point six million, which is, we put away half the surplus each year to try and build that, that reserve, and we do fund facility works on the RCMP buildings from it. Um, greenway amenity reserves are collected for a specific reason, so they are restricted. Uh, the landfill reserve is quite low, um, it's right there. The public works equipment replacement reserve is for replacing all of our fleet vehicles as they come due, four point four million. Um, the Canadian Museum of Flight at one point three, and the Central Gordon Estate is also a restricted reserve, money is collected for a specific reason at one point two. The other ones are a lot of really small, uh, small items, I'd be happy to show you the list. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I'd like that list, uh, just to understand what reserves we have and what purposes they have, just to understand more about how the township operates. Um, so just to clarify, the, the neighborhood parkland at the top, that is different than the neighborhood parkland acquisition reserve on the previous slide.
Parkland reserve.
This is not restricted, I'm assuming.
Uh, yeah, so the parkland reserve is, is the reserve that's used, so this, this one gets a little bit, uh, a little bit circular. Um, when we purchase property from DCCs, um, it comes from the DCC reserve, parkland DCC reserve. So, so just presume that twenty years ago, we purchased a piece of property from parkland DCCs. Twenty years later into the future, we're now going to sell that piece of property. We've satisfied the DCC requirement twenty years ago when we used parkland DCCs. So when we sell that, that piece of land, it doesn't go back into the DCC reserve, it goes into the parkland reserve, which is the parkland equivalent of the land capital reserve. So it's, it's a statutory reserve that's required when you sell parkland that was originally paid for from DCCs, it goes into that reserve, and it is restricted to the same uses as DCCs.
Okay, that makes, that makes a little bit more sense, as opposed to just, except putting it back into the DCC program.
Right.
Right.
Because, yeah, it's just the, the calculation of DCCs would be corrupted if we put it back in.
Correct, I think, yeah, I understand that, that'd be fine. Um, can you explain again, because again, I'm, this year, I'm really going to try to understand this, and it may require some follow-ups outside of council time, but net of internal borrowing, can you explain how we're using these reserves for internal borrowing?
Yeah, that's if, if we have used them for internal borrowing in the past. I think we had, um, a couple of years ago, we had a lot of discussion over a ninety-sixth, I'm just, I'm just hoping that you guys will remember this, Ninety-Sixth Avenue crosswalk, um, that was around a million dollars, and we funded that from the RCMP reserve internal borrowing, which just means that over the next few years, we will pay it back.
So, so the RCMP building, when it says net of internal borrowing, means that's the cash balance, even though it's owed money?
Correct.
Or is this, does this number include the amount of money that it's owed?
No, this is, this is, this would be larger if we didn't owe money.
So it might actually be larger than this?
Right, yeah.
You know, in a couple, when money started coming back in?
Yes.
This is the net number that council could access?
This is, funds available, correct.
Funds available, thank you.
Counselor Long.
Oh, the slide has changed. I saw the, um, museum of flight. Can you just explain to council what that one point three million, was that a philanthropist's?
Yes.
Gift?
It was, hundred percent.
So that's, that's, and it's designated for that purpose, so we can't be touching that, folks. Thanks.
Oh, councillor Ernstson.
Thank you. Um, I have just a general question regarding these categories, the reserves and surplus. So can you identify the source, the regulatory source in which we're required to maintain certain amounts? Is that something that's mandated, or is that something that's up to the discretion of any local government?
It's up to the discretion of each local government.
So if we wish to, we could, absent council, uh, well, no, that wouldn't happen without our deliberation and discussion, but we could bring them all down to zero?
I believe we could. I wouldn't probably recommend that we bring them down to zero, just being a finance person, but I, I believe there wouldn't be any legislation stopping us from doing that.
Okay, that was my fear. Thank you.
But, but as an example, can I, can I, um, share something with you?
Sure.
So our limit, our, our minimum on our operating surplus is ten percent of our operating expenditures. That's the, it's a very old policy, if you saw it, you'd laugh at it, use as a career. Um, it is ten percent of operating expenditures. Um, it is currently less than that. And I did notice, when I was at Metro, that their equivalent level is five percent. So a, a, a review could be in order, and, and, and we could reduce from ten to five, I'm, I'm, I'm supposing. If Metro, if, if five is good for Metro, then maybe, maybe it, this is just something that needs to be looked at and could be looked at. Further to your question of, could it go to zero?
Just as a follow-up to that, then, wouldn't it be a question of capacity, of who would have the greater ability to be able to, um, fulfill those requirements, should it be necessary, as opposed to a local government versus Metro Vancouver? And wouldn't that make a qualitative difference?
It definitely, it definitely could. Both, both are, because both are taxing agencies, I would argue that there's probably some similarity there, but you're right. Compared to, say, somebody in, in, in Jimmy Patterson, he would have a different, he would have different reasons for having the level that he would have, because he can't, he can't tax, and I'm not trying to recommend that, oh, we can have it anything we want because we can tax, but that is one of the, that is one of the reasons why I'm guessing that Metro is lower, and I am just surmising.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Just to clarify before the next question, legally, theoretically, we could have, um, no limit in terms of a policy, we could have it set at zero. Um, finance would not recommend that, they're, however, they are overbound by the previous council's decision to have a ten percent policy. Karen's simply warning that we're below the ten percent. Could this council set that, say, at five percent? They could. The challenge also then becomes, because it's non-statutory, then could we simply have one big reserve? In theory, we could have one big reserve referencing all these elements to them. It would be like one account with several sub-accounts, as opposed to the several sub-accounts existing. Again, we could do so, but all of those hinge on the issue of liquidity, because once you do that, then you're going to have, to have to make sure you have enough cash on hand to meet your daily obligations. In the private sector, that's usually done by lines of credit or some sort of bank accommodations, and generally, they wouldn't be having this level of funding. So that's the first qualitative decision. We also have the line of credit, as you may remember, every year, we have this revenue anticipation borrowing bylaw that comes through, that's, I think, got a cap of twenty-five million. In theory, we could actually rely on that and have zero reserves and a zero percent policy. Not recommended, though, because that really then impedes your liquidity and impedes your ability to deal or react to certain challenges that may occur. So in many ways, these amounts are a form of a policy, or amount of a, a fund that we could use if we needed to, so we could actually then draw down the other, the revenue anticipation borrowing bylaw funding if we needed to.
The problem, the challenge that will come with that, if we do that, and we absolutely can, is that it needs to be paid back by December thirty-first of the same year.
Counselor Woodward. Sorry.
I'm learning to wait now, it's my...
Yeah. Some people have their speaker on, so I can't quite figure that out.
Uh, yeah, I think, being from the private sector, almost, and not almost entirely, uh, the credit line example makes sense to me. I, I mean, a lot of us wouldn't carry a cash balance, we would have that working for us in some way, and then have a credit line to access, should something go wrong and be anticipated. Um, but I'm not suggesting anything like that, I'll consider it, maybe talk to you separately about it. I just wanted to mention for some of my council colleagues, sort of looking for statutory restrictions on, on council, that these are just questions for the moment, and to, and to wait to see what's proposed, if, if anything is proposed on, on using these.
Yeah, it's all for information.
Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Long.
I'm a little confused, well, I understand you congenially say, yes, it could go to zero, because there's nothing stopping us, but really, there is a policy that says it can't go to zero. So can we go to zero, or can't we go to zero?
Well, I, I think that, sorry, the question I was trying to answer was, was there a legislative reason why not? And I, and we have a township council policy, why not? I'm not aware of a legislative reason.
Okay, so then it can't go to zero without changing that policy, and we're already under the policy because, oh boy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
And this just, uh, shows contributed assets, how they've been growing. So this is a picture of the assets that have been turned over to the township by the development community that we then have to take care of from an operating perspective, and two thousand and eighteen was a large year. On development cost charge receipts, um, you can see how, just prior to two thousand and ten was the financial crisis, and they were quite low. Um, they, they have been moving steadily up since then. Um, you can see in two thousand and nineteen, January to October, they're, they're surpassing, um, they're having quite a spike. Um, we wouldn't probably expect to see that continue at that level, so we'll have to see how it looks over the next few years. In other words, I wouldn't budget that level of DCCs if we had a five-year program for five straight years. Um, but definitely, we are, are having larger receipts than are, than typical this year.
Counselor Woodward.
I wanted to ask about that, and I, I can look ahead here and see if it's coming up. No, it doesn't seem to be. Um, the, the DCC revenues for two thousand and nineteen, if you look at historically, of course, the average, uh, to the old rates is about seven to eight or nine. And if we've increased those by eighty percent, hopefully, starting twenty twenty-two, uh, would, could we expect the average there to roughly increase, the historical average roughly increased from fifteen, sixteen a million, do you think, a year? Would that be a fair assumption, as we budget for the five-year plan?
Uh, it's, it's a difficult assumption to make, because, uh, uh, not knowing the volumes, sort of like, uh, the rates are one part of it, but then the volumes of, of development applications that come in are the other piece. So it, it, it would be, it would be interesting to take what's in the pipe and, and project it out, and...
So for a five-year plan, you're attempting to, to sort of project what that might look like, right? Rather conservatively, I assume?
We're, we're, with the five-year plan, we're, we're really looking at the close history and saying, how do we feel this history is going to repeat itself over the next few years?
Would you think it appropriate, in a year like this, with a relative spike in, in DCCs because of the coming increases, that, that maybe we don't expend that, and maybe we hold back thirty to forty percent of that to, to see what it looks like the year following? So if we had eight point two last year, and we presumably spent somewhere around there, for, I'm looking at roads, DCC mostly.
Right.
Uh, and then we have fourteen, rather than spend thirteen and a half, maybe we spend ten and keep five in, in reserve for next year? Would that be appropriate? Okay, I'll raise that when we get to that capital.
And then this is the, currently a list of our outstanding debt. So this, these are all the things that we have borrowed for. We've tried to use friendly names for them, as, as opposed to issue number one-ten. Um, so hopefully, they ring true for council that have been here as long as, some of them go back quite a ways. But in the water, the water section is the first section, where we have the East Langley Water Supply, uh, the Maple Ridge Pump Station, um, and then an older one, which is the Langley Water Supply, which is almost done. We have the total debt from transportation, which includes the two thousand sixteen Street Overpass, or two oh eight Street Overpass, sorry, and two sixteen interchange. The two sixteen Street interchange is the one that we're, is, is similar to the one where we're dealing with the province on right now, which is two thirty-second Street and Highway One. Um, and then, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, we had the rail projects, rail and facility borrowing bylaws. So the rail overpass, railway and road construction projects, and rail overpass, Mufford Safety Initiatives, those three came about in, um, two years ago, as did the facility repair improvement and enhancement, five point five, um, a couple of sections down, and there was a parks one as well. Uh, where am I looking?
I have a couple of questions. Um, councillor Richter.
Sure.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at the two bottom lines there, and, uh, the total twenty nineteen, twenty twenty debt. I'm assuming we have to add up all of those to get a total number, is that correct?
Correct.
And so for the gray line, I'm getting a total number of ninety point two million.
That looks about right.
Now, for the orange line, so this gray line, is that internal debt? And the orange line is external?
No, this is all external debt. The difference between the gray line and the orange line is the gray line is just adding up that last section, which is, which is all of the new debt that we've been entertaining recently. Um, those items all came out of the two thousand and nineteen program, and actually, the LED streetlight program is, is in the twenty twenty that we're talking about. Um, so those are all relatively new items. Um, the orange line totals all the way up. So if these items are added, that gives you the total.
So the total, if I go across that line and add them all up, I'm coming out with two hundred point two million dollars is our total debt?
Correct, that's, that's total debt.
And what was our total debt last year?
One eleven.
One eleven. So...
Oh, sorry, ninety-nine.
Ninety, so it was ninety-nine?
Yeah.
And we're now at...
For the township.
Two hundred point two. So we've, we've increased our debt over a hundred percent in one year.
Correct.
That's even worse than I thought it was. Okay, thank you.
In two, in two years. Oh, sorry, yes, in one year, right, yeah. Uh, it's a little, it's a, there's a little bit of a blurry line, because, uh, some of the debt from the last borrowing, which was the facility and all the railways, some of it didn't hit the books until two thousand and nineteen. So there's a little bit of a blurry line, but it would be, it would be pretty close.
Oh, but right now, we have over two hundred million dollars in external debt.
We have two hundred, correct.
And last year, we only had a hundred and eleven million, or ninety, ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine, not including LFS. With LFS, it was one eleven.
Okay, so ninety-nine in twenty nineteen. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, um, that, you just mentioned the term hit the books. Um, I, I guess I'm looking at the, uh, the, you know, there's the thirty-two point two million, which is the interchange, the widening of two oh eights, and the rail overpass. Well, can you explain hitting the books versus when they started and how it was phased over?
So hi- hitting the books just means that on some of the projects, they take multiple years to complete. So at the end of, say, the year two thousand and eighteen, for some of the railway projects and the facilities and the parks, one, borrowing that we did in eighteen, um, we would have gotten to a point of completion by the end of two thousand and eighteen, and we would have borrowed for that. We were doing a progress draw where we borrowed how, only how much we needed. And then the following year, as we complete the rest of the works, the debt for that hits that second year. So we don't put, necessarily put the whole, in some, in some cases, if we borrow it all, we have two ways of borrowing. If we borrow it all upfront, then the borrowing cost of debt servicing will hit the books all in, when we borrow it. If we borrow it as a progress draw, which is another option we have, and we've talked about with the land, doing the temporary borrowing, then we only have to log the debt servicing in our budget as we, as we incur it.
Yeah, okay. But councillor Richter pointed, she did some adding up, as some of us are adding up. I mean, this railway, I can't remember the last time we built a railway overpass. I mean, how long goes that?
So that was, uh, about two years ago, we had, uh, in the budget, there was a process, So that was about two years ago, we had, in the budget, there was a process, about $6 million worth of railway works that spanned three years. And when the decision was made to borrow it, we didn't want to borrow like 2.5 one year, 1.5 the next year, and the balance the following year. We borrowed the whole amount, which allowed staff to just start on the railway works and just complete them. So we borrowed the amount all, all at one time to, to finish those railway works. That was, that was phased out over three years essentially to be, to help us to afford it.
That was the project that the government of Canada asked, all of?
Yes, all the crossings, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's important thing to let the public know that perhaps some of our budget and some of the, our costs incurred on hustle, which we probably didn't anticipate, that's one thing. The other thing is our, the 208, that was completed a while ago, wasn't it? A couple of years ago?
Uh, that was, it started in, it was 2016 borrowing, I believe, and I think it was finished quite quickly. So it was probably finished in 16 or 17. And 2016 interchange was just finished more recently.
So, okay, if it's completed in 2016, it's 2020 now, why are we putting 11 million into it?
Oh, this is, this is, this is just a snapshot of what our outstanding loans are. So this is our borrowing.
Okay, they're borrowing off DCCs. It's still, as Counsel Richter said, it's still added up to all those, that 200 million. I mean, no matter how you look at it, I mean, and I guess the interchange at 13.2, and that's obviously the province built the interchange, right? And then weren't all our roads going up sewer and water and anything else? Those are costs we incurred. You don't know the to, total cost of TOL for that, do you?
For, sorry, for which?
Okay. My question was for the interchange at 216th Street and Highway Number 1.
That's it there, that 13.2. There might have been...
That was a total amount with 13.2?
No, no, sorry. I believe there was some funded from DCCs that wasn't borrowed. I, I don't have that, I don't have that amount handy.
Well, just like other council, I, I need to sit down and go over some of these as well. But thank you very much. I realize they hit the books at a different time, and I understand they're funded through different resources, including borrowing and other DCCs. So, thank you.
And Karen, just to follow up, two points on that, starting with 216th Street. Our calculation or our percentage of that is based on the inter-municipal traffic flows that would have occurred. I think the overall cost of the interchange was something like $60 million, give or take. So ours would be the percentage represented by what we paid. Perhaps a more complicated event, though, is, is the focus on these total numbers. While they do total to that amount, the amount actually generally funded from the, from the taxpayer is the one that's critical. Because the other accounts deal with such things as debt from DCCs, debt from utilities or from user pay utilities, which are a bit like the, the inverse of a trust fund, where you're holding the funds, but the, the money is actually being paid by a third party or is being deposited by a third party. An analogy would be to that of a bank that may actually have several funding sources, but may have to administer several loans, only a small portion of which are actually for the bank's operations itself. So Karen, in this example, the total actually funded from general, from the general tax fund is, is, how much is the general tax fund debt, put it that way?
So the first two columns, 64 and 45, you could add those together and say it's approximately 110. So those are funded from DCCs and, and user pay utilities, those first two columns. So approximately 110 of the total is not funded from property tax.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I think that was helpful. Start again. Yeah, I think that was helpful. I think, appreciate Mr. Back and sort of highlighting that. I was gonna sort of head down the same road here a little bit, that the new debt brought on by this council, which I cast a vote for, is the LED program map and the land acquisitions on the right side, 16.4 and 43.4. Would that be accurate?
Yeah.
Again, only, not, not including DCC projects, which we supported in the last budget. But the new debt voted on by this council is approximately 65 to 66 million. 67, okay. So that, so this, 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 these talking points about adding $100 million in debt, that would include projects approved by previous councils?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Yes, that's, that's the answer I was looking for. I actually knew what the answer was gonna be, actually, so. So I think it's important that I might have to follow up with an email and get some more numbers from you in, in order to start to educate the public on, on actually what's occurring here. And so I think that that's really important to note, that most of that would be for land assets, is that correct? The only capital in terms of infrastructure is the LED for 4.3 and the map for 1.9, would that be accurate?
Yes.
So the vast majority of that would be for a land asset, which is not increasing the necessity to increase our operating budget? It's not imposing an additional capital burden on the operating budget, is that fair?
I, I would say that it's, there's a little bit of work that's being required on some of the land assets that we purchased.
So we have to mow the grass maybe, once in a while?
And there's some excavation work that's happening.
As opposed to a civic facility, which cost us, how much did the ACCC cost us to build? And then the operating impact that that's now having on our budget, which people liquidated the land reserve in order to pay for? Perhaps it would have been more appropriate to spend that money on land assets. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
I just, I, if you look in facilities, a lot of lines say...
What's your point?
Good. Madam Chair, the technical, I think, point is, this meeting started at 10:30 and goes till terminated. We may wish to adjourn partway through for a bit of a break, perhaps at 12:30 for 15 or 30 minutes, or we could go right through. That would be up to the, the panel.
Shall we?
Well, if, if council wishes, and I don't, I'm not one of them, but I would be one of my minority, if they wish to continue on, that'd be fine.
How many more slides do we have?
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I would, I'd maybe make a recommendation that we, we hit, we look at the project slides after, if, if there's gonna be a break, it would be after the break. That the project slides are the ones that sometime can be spent looking at what's not funded, what's funded, and...
Okay, we'll go with your recommendation. Is that fair? Do I need to make a motion? Okay.
More direct, we're about 70 slides in total, I think, but the project slides, I'm thinking Karen is saying we'll go quicker. So perhaps we'll just go to, unless there's a contrary direction, 12:30 and then take the break if council wants to break.
Okay. I guess we'll go to Counselor Davis.
The problem is, if you give me a sandwich, you lose my cutting edge, and I want to fall asleep. Okay, I, I, you know, I kind of, maybe a comment. With, and I think Counselor Woodwards, Woodward put it in, kind of in perspective. If you believe him, didn't, that was a joke, sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Okay. But we do, we do have to educate, 'cause Matthew's gonna get up, he's gonna get out of here and say, double the debt, we're all bad, right? And, and if you, so we do have, we, we, it, it is down here. It, to, to me, debt from DCCs or debt from utilities, like if you, that, that $100 million isn't entirely what we've, we've spent in the last three or four months. So it comes up from things like, I mean, we've got not much debt for the water. But, okay, I guess I, I'm just concerned that I see the details in this. And it, it, I guess, if you say it's a 200 mil, $100 million more, but it, you can't just say that. You have to put the details of what we spent, why we owe that money. And it's maybe not as much as, as we think it is in, with, that we've spent in the last three months or something like that. Because there's debt on, on there that has been coming down the pike, and we've known that. And we've all voted, well, I've voted for a lot of it, because it, we, we need, as a township, we need to spend money on water. We need to spend money on roads. We need to spend money on parkland. You know, anyhow, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, that we've got to dissect this slide a little bit if we're gonna, if we're gonna consider, consider it, it's not just one line. It shouldn't be just one line.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, to provide the, the details in, in any format that's helpful.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think Counselor Woodward said, could you, like, are you, will you give us some, will you give us all the text or all the, to, to break that open so maybe it doesn't look the way it looks? So we can, we can say, hey, well, this, you can see the roadmap a lot clear. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Thank you. Just as, as we look at this chart like this, are these, are these the total amounts of debt for these items of, with the project, or are these what's remaining in, that we still outstanding to pay?
So it's, it's a mixture. When we talk about timing of when the debt hit the books, I should, I should specify, we start with what's, what the debt is on our books from an audited perspective. So what the auditors will actually see is outstanding debt that we've actually incurred. And that's, that's our starting, starting point, because that's an audited number. So that's a good number to start with. And then we add to that any items that we know are coming. So they're more like budgeted debt that are, that we, that we've got council approval for and we're, and we will have on our books at the end when it's all said and done. So there's a little bit of a mixture of debt that we have actually acquired that are on our audited financial statements. And to that, to give the full picture, we add on debt that has since been approved from that time. So this is a combination, this is meant to capture all of our outstanding debt. So there's no other issue outside of what we're showing here that's, that's not reflected here.
Right, okay. So now, but some of our, some of our debts, we talked about some of these projects, you know, being completed in 2017, and then they show up here now. But some of them, we would have paid some of that debt back already, would we not have?
Yeah, the next slide is actually the debt payments.
Oh, I see.
But just in terms of a reconciliation of how much debt we have entirely, how much borrowing we have as an, as an overall overarching number, we started with the end of the year 2018, what was audited, and then we added anything that wasn't, that hasn't yet materialized.
Okay, so as we, if we were to look at this in a year from now, we would see that some of these items, the numbers would be reduced because we have paid some of that debt back.
Correct, yeah. And the 2019 bottom line will be, will be updated to include everything that's, that's, that's technically been approved and we've, we've drawn. So we, we could, we'll be able to update this slide with more exact numbers in, in literally six weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, so I just, you'd said we've got 110 million of total debt not funded by the taxpayer. Did I write that correctly?
Yeah, so the first two columns, the first column of 64 is funded from DCCs.
Okay, so when these projects are taken on, we borrow the money from the DCC fund to pay for them?
No, we borrow externally, but we pay it back from DCC receipts.
Okay. So this is, in a way, external debt, if we borrowed externally.
Yes.
So from the auditor's perspective, we, I, I just want to go back and check the numbers. We had 99 million in 2019, and this year, we're gonna have 200.2 million. Those would be audited debt numbers.
Once all of the debt that we're talking about here has, we've completed the projects and we've drawn the debt, yes.
And, and so the same thing, when we go debt from utilities, the 6.8 million for the pump station, we borrowed that externally. We're gonna pay it back when the utility fund builds up, right?
Oh, we're paying that one back from water user fees.
From user fees, okay. And then the transportation utility fund. We, again, that first one, the railway, we borrowed 13 million, we're paying it externally, we're paying it back from...
Those ones, other than the 4.3 at the very bottom, those ones are being paid back from general property taxes, transportation utility taxes.
Property taxes. And the same then for the stormwater utility, the parks utility, and general tax. Okay, thank you. But it's still 200.2 million dollars in total debt?
It is.
Counselor Long?
Thanks. I just wanted to unpack a little bit more of this concept that the lands that the township owns don't cost us anything. I mean, what about, I mean, it costs us the purchase, of course, but I mean, ongoing, if we purchase a whole pile of land, which we've been doing, what about the loss of tax revenue from those properties? I mean, if they're not, if they're sitting fallow, then we lose those, those tax contributions from the landowners. That's, that's a sizable number.
That could be true.
As we, as we get more and more land. So I, I don't see that showing up anywhere, but it's probably a figure I need to keep an eye on. And, and the way to avert that, I would think, is to lease out maybe the properties, or can we find some way that these properties can be utilized in the interim while we're holding them? Because my understanding is if they are, like if we lease to a farmer or something, then taxes would, would be due if they're being used by, rather than just sitting there.
If we lease them, they become taxable, correct?
Yeah. That's a number to keep an eye on.
Counselor Woodward?
I want to clarify that, 'cause that's not my understanding. So if the township, I'm gonna pick around numbers, taxes the community $100 million, and then a property is acquired by the federal government, for example, they're not subject to municipal taxes, we're still taxing the community $100, just every remaining property pays a little bit more. So wouldn't that actually be incorrect, what Counsel Long is saying? We're not losing out on tax revenue. Everybody else is just paying just a fraction more to make up the difference. Is that more accurate of what's occurring?
That's correct, yeah.
So what you're saying about us losing out on the tax revenue actually was not fully accurate?
We've just removed one taxable owner from the role.
Right, so we're still collecting the same amount of taxes?
We're always collecting the same.
Correct, so when we're...
We always collect what we need, it's just everybody, everybody other than that one taxable owner who is, now, now that property is exempt, everybody else will pay more.
Right, so when, if that, if those properties that we acquired, again, pick around number, we're paying $25,000 in annual taxes, and now we own those properties, we're still getting that $25,000?
We're getting what we need. Yes.
Actually, we're still getting that $25,000 from other property.
From everybody else.
Yeah, so I want to clarify that.
Yes.
This concept that we're not collecting this money or somehow costing us money isn't true. Thank you.
It, it doesn't reduce the overall taxes that we levy, but it does increase the levy on everybody else. Right, yeah.
Counselor Long?
Well, it's so very helpful to clarify that, because the fact is that the taxpayer is gonna be paying that, right? So this is, we're putting that debt onto everybody. It's getting shared nicely around by everybody else paying our debt. So there's that about it. But, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it is a figure to keep an eye on. But that means that that burden is being transferred to the average taxpayer, whether they know it or not. Never mind the, all the carrying costs as well. But I mean, the fact is, if we could get more revenue out of those properties, then we all win, don't we? So there might be some, some way we could look at that for sure.
Definitely.
Counselor Ferguson?
I think, I think that Counselor Long's point is well-taken, but we, we do keep an eye on our books. And if I may, my question is, there's also new growth and new taxation coming in all the time, if I may, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's, that's true. And also, it's always been the case, whenever we purchase land for roads or for bridges or for parks, or the list goes on and on and on, there is, that property would no longer be paid for a private citizen, it would own by a TOL, which could go into those, those particular land uses. That's not, is that correct?
Sorry, if we buy a...
If we buy a parcel to put a park on, somebody would have owned that parcel, would have paid a tax prior. And now we have it for a school or a park or a road, and the list goes on. And that would mean that it's always been the case that the, either new growth or the general population would handle that. That's correct?
Correct, yeah. And it's the same, the same concept with permissive tax exemptions, if I, if I may. When we, when we grant a permissive tax exemption, it removes that taxpayer from the role, and everybody else pays.
I just wanted to clarify that for council.
Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to follow up on what Counselor Woodward, I'll sort of try and take out, I think, the substance of what he was suggesting about educating the public about some of this debt and our expenditures. So what I'm thinking from my perspective would be very helpful is if we took the township of Langley and looked at the historical standards of infrastructure, what our borrowing was, if any at the time, and how that has changed substantially over the last decade or so, relating it to the development of the community and urbanization. So I think it would be helpful for people to recognize that unfortunately, the people that are coming to our community in anticipation of new infrastructure, new recreation centers, new parks, et cetera, et cetera, that there is a cost that's attached to that, and it is a burden that we have not historically had in the township of Langley, being more or less a rural community. And so I think what would be most helpful is to look at a graph that shows that trend, because I don't think you could articulate it any more clearly than to show the population increase correlated to how much our costs are going up. I think it would be very instructive for people to recognize that these two things are correlated. And every time we talk about the priorities that we have and the needed infrastructure and safety and all these other considerations, that there has to be a public understanding of the facts of why it is that we are trending this way. And so, and, you know, my only other point about that is that if we anticipate... And so, and, you know, my only other point about that is that if we anticipate in some manner, if we're doing unprecedented things, I would actually like to look at the way the countries look at GDP and say, what's your debt ratio to, you know, what it is that you're creating? I know we don't have that because we don't have widgets that we're selling in the township that we can acquire some kind of monies from. So being limited to a tax base and trying to keep that down, but I think it would be helpful to look at a snapshot and say, where are we with respect to our debt? And what does that look like relative to best management practices for local government? To situate ourselves amongst, I would say, comparators. I wouldn't say we should obviously compare ourselves to Vancouver, that would be unreasonable, but other growing communities, so we can get more of a sense of, are we being very prudent in our stewardship? Is this something that we need to more directly manage now that it seems to be, for lack of a better term, somewhat ballooning at this point? And I don't foresee that this need will diminish in any way for the next at least 10 or 20 years. Therefore, I just think we need some more common understanding about what that looks like and why it is.
I think that would be a great run-up to the longer-term strategies that we've been talking about, to have that historical meet the line where we then project 10 years into the future.
Karen, just to close that topic, in part, some of that information would ordinarily be in the entity's balance sheet because we'd actually see a tremendous growth in the, what would be called retained earnings, but in this case, it would be the tangible capital assets. And in the period of time, we've been talking about this, I think, sorry, since the beginning of our records, I think our tangible capital assets have increased by an order of magnitude of a billion dollars, or something like that. So part of the change you're seeing is as we move from being a rural to a mix of urban and rural, we are acquiring assets that if we were to, I guess, negotiate our sale to a joining municipality could do very well for us, just of course that's not likely to happen.
Counselor Long.
Thanks, just to expand slightly on who pays what. We've had a discussion of who's paying taxes, who isn't. Federal government pays taxes, do they not, on properties, and the provincial, can we have a, can counsel know?
They pay what is called pilt.
Pilt, yeah.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
They have a lot of discretion as to what pieces of the taxes they pay, but they generally try to be good neighbors by paying their payments in lieu of taxes.
And is the province also doing that?
The province has a similar...
So that means, you know, for example, that inn, the Quality Inn, which was made cornerstone, or corner, book, or whatever, sorry, it's paying its share too.
They pay portions, pieces of the taxes. I'm sorry, I don't have the top of my head which ones they don't pay. There are some line items that they don't pay, but in general, they try to be called what's a good neighbor and pay their fair share of taxes, yes.
Good, thanks.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could go to the next slide, which is the debt servicing slide?
Yes.
And again, I've got questions about the bottom lines there. So the gray line, if I'm adding that up correctly, I'm coming to a number of 3.449, 3, 3,449,900.
Correct.
To service the gray line or the white line.
Right.
And so that would be the 99 million that you referenced as the audited number?
No, these amounts here are the debt payments on those items to the left. The items that are more recent debt map, the map, yeah.
Okay.
The land acquisitions and the LED.
So the gray line is the 3.5 million, and then the orange line underneath it, if I add that up, is 11, 11.5 million. So we've now taken on, and the orange line, that corresponds to the 200?
That's the, that's the value of the debt payments to service the debt on the previous slide.
Okay. So we've actually increased our debt servicing by 234% this year alone because we've gone from 3.5 million up to 11.5 million in debt servicing, which is a difference of roughly 8.1 million, right?
We had about 9, 9-point-something million prior, in the 2000, in the audited financial statement. So the 3, the 3.9 that you're referencing right there is just for those items that fall in that column funded from DCCs.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the second column is funded from the user pay utilities, so it's sort of trying to adopt the same format as the previous slide. So the 3.9 million is coming from DCCs to fund those, the debt in that column, those are the...
Yeah, but I guess what I'm wanting confirmation on, our total debt servicing is 11.5 million this year.
That sounds about right. Yep, correct.
Okay, and our total debt servicing last year was?
Was nine and change, I believe.
Eight.
Sorry?
Eight.
Eight, eight, eight million.
Eight million?
Yeah.
Just an even eight?
Eight oh six eight.
Okay. Oh, no, eight oh six eight. All right, eight oh six eight, that's the difference between the orange line total and the gray line total.
Right, the orange line is the total, all, everything, including the newer issues which are highlighted in that bottom box.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Counselor Woodward.
Is the budget approved yet?
2020 budget?
Yeah.
No.
No, so it wouldn't be clear what the current debt servicing cost is in this budget, would it?
That's correct, this is what's being proposed.
Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Counselor Woodward answered my question, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up question? So is reducing annual debt servicing a viable option for us to look at? Like, can we bring it down from 11.5 million to something lower? And if we can, how do we do that?
So we can't bring the debt servicing down, but what we have done is identified for two of these items that they're not impacting property taxes. Items that would normally, traditionally, impact property taxes, and one is the 4.3 million dollars that we borrowed, that we will borrow for the LED street lighting program, where we've identified that that's going to be funded from savings. So that won't have an impact on taxes. The 2,218,004 on the far right-hand column, that funding is coming from a reduction in the capital infrastructure renewal and replacement transfer, annual transfer. So that is not impacting taxes. So to the degree that we can do those kinds of offsets, we cannot impact taxes. But if we do borrowing that doesn't have an offset, then it impacts taxes.
So essentially, we're looking at 11.5 million.
The debt payment will be...
Debt servicing.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. This year, which is an increase from last year. Okay.
This is just, for purposes of our future discussion, if we talk about borrowing, this is what, a 1% tax increase, which is approximately 1.34 million, would buy about 22.26 million worth of borrowing. So it's just for your information, and that changes every day with the, when the rates change. But that's what it was when we did the slide. So about 20, 22 million dollars can be borrowed with a 1% tax increase for debt servicing.
Counselor Woodward.
Do we know, do we know the interest rate that we'll be subject to yet?
No.
We do not, so that also, we'll be estimating that for the purposes of this budget. So again, it won't be 100% clear.
Correct.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please? Yeah, did either of these two slides, the first one or the last one, do they outline the potential cost of how much more we've paid for land assets because we chose not to purchase them five or 10 years ago when they would have been much cheaper? And maybe if we'd borrowed money at that time, how many millions we would have made for the taxpayer? Does this slide include that information?
It does not.
Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, we can't go back in the past too much.
I'm going to let Counselor Ferguson finish.
Oh, I think I'm being shut down by the clock. And I just wanted to ask the word strategic, is that just something that we came up with, or that it's something you do on an ongoing basis?
It just, it actually just identifies that this last group of borrowing that we did was, it was, the issue was called a strategic land borrowing.
It was land borrowing rather than strategic land borrowing.
Hopefully, we're always strategic. You're right, it could be just borrowing.
Nope.
So we are now at the stage where we'll be going through the projects.
Is this where we want to take a break?
It might be a logical place, yeah.
12:30?
Okay, so the previous slide where you had the strategic borrowing, so 22 million can be borrowed and its debt servicing of 1.3 million would be equivalent to a 1% tax increase. So can we just go out and borrow 22 million? Or do we have to have specific reasons why we're borrowing 22 million?
We have to have specific reasons why we're borrowing, yeah.
Okay.
This is just to give a sense of what the cost of this borrowing would be.
All right, I think everybody is getting a little hangry, so probably a good time for lunch.
Madam Chair, if we could have a motion to adjourn, say for 30 minutes?
Okay. Moved by Counselor Long and seconded, of course, by Counselor Davis.
What time?
30 minutes?
30 minutes? 30 minutes. Oh, yeah, 30 minutes is good.
Madam Chair, you need to call the question?
Okay, I need to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass, no one's opposed. All right, we can convene with the regular, do I need a motion to begin, or we can just carry on? Okay. Oh, sorry, I'll get your speaker.
So this is the part of the process where we typically go through each area and look at the projects that are currently listed as inside the funding envelope and the projects that are currently outside the funding envelope. Along the road, you'll see some of the placeholder budgets that we've been talking about, but I'm going to start off with a couple of slides that just show some of the large multi-year projects that we have to consider as we move through what is the 2020 capital budget. So this first slide shows multi-year projects inside the funding envelope for 2020, sorry. And this doesn't necessarily mean that just because it's inside the funding envelope for 2020 that it is for all years. The item in red that you see alongside WC Blair Recreation Center shows that it's in for 2020, but the 1.1 we're going to have to find funding for in 2021, so that'll be a problem for next year, a challenge for next year. But in this case, for most of these projects that are funding in 2020, this is just showing you the number of multi-year projects that we have in both Universal Services and User Pay Utilities.
Okay, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, why, what are we doing at the Blair Center? Ah, let's take a look at that. Didn't we just spend a whack of money on that?
Multi-year funding is required to continue with renovations to other portions of the facility such as the interior finishes at various areas throughout the building, electrical and mechanical upgrades. The mechanical equipment throughout the facility is at or past its service life and requires replacement to ensure continued performance. The electrical systems also need replacement. The main electric component requiring replacement is the existing motor control center.
Okay, thank you.
The 208th Street corridor for 10 million dollars, what is that money for? I mean, I know it's for 208th Street, but...
Item F10 of the June 25th regular afternoon council meeting, so it's related to a council report. In 2019, it showed a million dollars for detailed design and construction estimates for the east side of 208th Street from 68th to 76th, and 2.1 million for 208th Street from 83rd Avenue to 84th. I'm looking at page 236, if anybody wants to take a look. 236, yeah. 2020, the 10.7 million is for detailed design and construction estimates for 208th Street from 64th to 68th. And then in 2023, they have another 23 million listed, right, for interim improvements for 208th Street between, oh, sorry, yeah, 64th and 68, between 83rd and 84th Avenue. And after construction estimates have been determined for 208th Street between 68 and 76th Avenue. So all the different sections of 208th corridor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, okay, thank you. You've answered that one, I think we'll be hearing more about that again, I'm sure. The Blair, again, I realize, now, in, they finished a number of upgrades, I think, to the Blair over the last, I know it took a long time, but I mean, these things take time. And I was wondering at the time whether an assessment was done or whether these particular projects didn't make the mark because, you know, mechanical and electrical, that's always ongoing. And I was just wondering while they're in there, whether they had a chance to look at that or whether that was put on from other budget years.
So I believe the three components of WC Blair, and then I'll defer to Mr. Shohan, I think is here. The first large upgrade that we did was a few years back, was an interior upgrade. And then more recently, we did an exterior upgrade of the cladding, and then this is sort of like a phase three, would that be fair, of the mechanical part of it?
Okay, thank you.
It was just, the work was just broken up in those ways.
Okay.
Any other questions on this slide? And this is, this reflects three multi-year projects that are currently falling outside the funding envelope but have funding in 2019. So they have had some funding allocated to them, whether it was for advanced design or review, but in the years coming, they're a struggle to fund. So I'm just highlighting the truck route network improvements in North Langley, Yorcson Community Development Park, and the Jericho Reservoir View Park. So we'll come upon these projects again as we move through the individual areas. And this is, I turned the pages and read from them, and here are these three, oh, sorry, these three are right here. So there's a truck, truck route network improvements for North Langley is there. To undertake detailed design and construction of an alternative truck route in North Langley approved by the Ministry of Transportation in October 2018. Why do I have that one twice? Oh, sorry, why do I have that one twice? You know, it's been a long day when I'm looking at two screens and going, why do I have that one twice? Yorcson Community Park Development. So this is a phased construction of a $2 million an acre community park in Yorcson. New middle school opened on this shared site September 2014. Synthetic turf and sand turf fields built in 2017. Additional synthetic turf fields, children's play area, spray park, washroom buildings, parking lots, and a connecting trails as per the conceptual master plan for the site. For 2019, parking area, field lighting, and backstop fencing. Additional lit parking north of 82nd Avenue is required. In 2020, in design of two washroom buildings and construction of one washroom building to service the spray park. And then finally, the Jericho Reservoir View Park. Construction of a publicly accessible view park, leave it at that. Rooftop park to include tennis courts, pickleball courts, seating areas, shade structures, and so on. So these are just, this is just the information on those three projects that span multiple years and cur... and currently are not included inside funding envelope. So, starting with water. This, the, pretty much everything in water has been shown as inside the funding envelope, so we don't have any items outside. So I'll just leave that slide as in the practice.
Yeah, I just have a, sorry, I had a question from Mr.
Sorry, I just didn't want to get too far, I had questions on the last slides. So, these items that are listed here, it shows 2019 and 2020. So all of these items in 2020 are inside the funding envelope except for the last three on the second page, which are in red.
So, on this page, on this page, all the items in 2019, '20 are inside the funding envelope. And for the future years, just that one in red for W.C. Blair Recreation Centre, that's the only one that's currently outside for 2021.
Okay.
And then on the next page, the black are funded, 2019. And even 2020, we haven't got inside the funding envelopes here.
Right, so there is some carryforward from 2019 for three, these three items, but only a small amount.
Correct, yeah.
So, there is gonna, there is a, needed to have at least another 3 million for 2020 in order to do those three projects.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question. And it's coming up on the next afternoon meeting, I believe, about the development cost charges bylaw. And it makes mention of the Jericho Reservoir View Park as not being a township asset, so we can't actually technically collect DCCs for it? Is that, am I under, and it's, what, does that impact the budget and these numbers at all?
I'll have to take a look, but I believe the Jericho Reservoir itself is a Metro Vancouver asset.
Right.
But I think, and I can check with Al, the reservoir view park would be our asset, would that be correct, Al?
I believe we have a long-term lease, so I believe we, and we are making improvements and operating it, so I believe it's our TCA, that part of it.
So that the water infrastructure is owned, of the actual reservoir itself, is owned by Metro Vancouver. But this is a park surrounding it and through a lease, yeah, we're owning it and improving it.
So phase two, because it says here, project number 48, reservoir phase two Jericho, is it cost share with the GVWD?
That's the, that's the infrastructure, the actual reservoir itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh, do you still, are you, okay, I'll clear the queue then.
So this is the first slide, as I mentioned, water, I'll just leave it there for a second. And if you have no lights going on, then I will move along. But if you have any questions, we'll try and answer them. So we have four critical items at the top. And there is the Jericho Booster Station, that's another asset that Metro Vancouver owns. Oh, sorry, no, the Jericho Reservoir, two up from that, Reservoir Jericho Willoughby.
Counselor Woodward.
So again, I'm still getting, you know, Jericho this and Jericho that. I just want to confirm that this second project is the one that's been removed from the DCC program? Or this is a different project?
So, we have, outstanding on the books right now, we have Jericho Phase One, which the work is being done right now. And we actually are paying for it approximately $3 million a year. So we have a sort of an equal payment plan for the work that is currently being done. And this $3,030 is the, another, a year of that.
Yeah, so it's phase two and phase three that are now problematic for us.
Right, correct.
All right, thanks.
So I guess if I keep looking at this, there is $47 million. So the rail overpass, the 232 interchange. So, again, will any of those, the fact that those aren't, it won't impact the budget?
Sorry, where is this?
No, sorry, I'm in, I'm still in that, and it'll probably be covered in the afternoon, so maybe we'll just deal with it then.
Karen, perhaps a brief discussion might just put a context around it to make it go a bit more smoothly. Historically, when it comes time to do any borrowings, the ministry has not objected to municipal borrowings as long as they were for public purposes. More recently, in the last few months, there's been some change of staff and some new interpretations. Effectively, the municipalities ought not to be borrowing unless they own the asset itself. So not for a broader public purpose, but for ownership of the asset itself. So you'll see a number of projects out there historically completed or underway that are for a public purpose and municipalities have contributed. Recent ministry interpretations suggest that unless the municipality owns those assets, they should not be borrowing for them. We believe that that interpretation is suspect and it needs to be reviewed further because it puts not just the townships' projects in question, but a number of provincial projects. And you can use the freeway expansion all the way from here to Chilliwack. No cost sharing would certainly have some impacts on municipalities. Likewise, Metro Vancouver water infrastructure or sewer infrastructure, it would make a very, much of a big difference. So what we're doing, though, because of the timing it's taking to resolve those issues, if they can be resolved, is to proceed with a DCC bylaw that takes out the projects that they are objecting to most recently. That is, projects that are not underway, not started, and saying that they should not be borrowed for unless they are actually owned by the municipality. That's allowing us to proceed with our DCC bylaw, get some better rates than we currently have, but not the ultimate rates potentially. So it may facilitate an amendment, or it may facilitate a restructuring of the program, but at least we won't have rates from 2012.
Thank you.
Senator Stewart is in some.
Oh, sorry, I have, no, Counselor Richter, I'm wanting to...
Yeah, on the water one, it's not the same as the slide in our package on page 281 because it's got that climate thing at the top. And I'm wondering why an electrical service upgrade is a climate issue?
On your, on your package, that one was changed at the last minute from pre-approval to climate. So that's why it's moved from actually the bottom of the list to the top of the list, based on, just alphabetical. Sorry about that.
But why did we call it climate?
I think, Madam Chair, if I could, I'll take a stab, and then Mr. Schohan can help. I believe it's the energy efficient part of the item that relates to climate.
Yes, this was part of the pre-approval they brought forward to council
for a grant opportunity that was brought forward for a DCFC fast charger to be put forward at the operations centre and for upgrading the EV fleet for the yard. This was required because the current electrical capacity at the operations centre is that capacity.
Okay. Counselor Woodward.
So this is going to be a common question, so maybe you can start working it into some of the presentation if you know some of the answers. So, for example, for the Alder Grove Water Treatment Plant, which I have not read the capital sheet yet for that, if it's in the DCC program, or, sorry, not in the DCC program, the Water Capital Works Reserve, isn't that reserve sufficient enough to fund it completely from that reserve? Rather than 475 from operating revenue?
I'm not sure.
So, for example, where are these divisions coming from? Those are submitted by senior staff to you, and then you put them in this format for us?
It could, it could, I'd have to check into it, to be honest. It could be just where the line was drawn at the end of... There's probably more in here funded from the Water Capital Works Reserve. This could just be where the line was drawn on the operating fund. So then the balance bounced down.
I'll just put a star next to it, and then maybe you can look at that for me. Thanks.
Senator, any questions on this slide? Solid waste hazardous cart, collection carts being replaced and annual equipment replacement? Or, sorry, damaged carts being replaced and the annual replacement of used carts?
Counselor Woodward.
If you could please go back to sanitary sewer. So, just so I understand what's occurring. Annual sewer infrastructure replacement, $500,000. Annual sanitary lift station upgrades, $500,000. So that's $1 million, for example, that essentially we don't specifically know what that's going towards? That's the format of the budget that's been historical? That there's, these are not identified for specific items? They're just there to maybe spend, maybe not?
There's a specific number of items that they actually do fund. We just haven't specified which items. So, for example, this is an annual capital project which seeks funding to replace sewer infrastructure, including gravity mains, force mains, valves, and manholes. So those typical items that...
Yeah, so for example, it says here, top-up funding only to $500,000. So if it's being funded at an addition for $500,000 more, that means it was depleted to zero previously? And now we're putting $500,000 back more into it? Is that what top-up funding means?
Yeah, or there could have been some remaining carryforward from 2019 and not, but they've identified work that they have to do in 2020. And so they're saying, I'll take the carryforward and I'll see you $500,000 more to get the work done that's required.
Okay, and so that, if carryforward balance would have been on the carryforward column in the slides you showed earlier, or would have been embedded in one of the surplus columns?
It would be on the carryforward.
Be on the carryforward, okay, thank you.
I'm not sure we have the detail of the individual projects' carryforward on the slide previous. It was in a overall column summary by area. But we can get to that.
Okay, so when I see top-up funding on these capital sheets, that's what, I don't have to ask about them the rest of the afternoon, that's what's occurring.
Right.
There may or may not be some leftover carryforward, but the request is for an additional $500,000, which would push that item up to 700s, 800s, whatever it might be.
Correct, or it could be, it could have all been used and they're just asking for their allocation again. Sometimes what they had was, sometimes they'll, never mind, I'm over there. I was just trying, I was thinking of all the options, but the two, the two major options are, is that they have carryforward funding, but they know what they want to do is going to take more, so they ask for more. In absence of the carryforward funding, they have a $500,000 in this particular area. They have a $500,000 annual amount that they ask for.
Okay, so for every, so now if I've identified $1 million, it's not similar to the rest of the capital budget, which is a project, a ranking, a cost, funding? This one is, here's $1 million, go do stuff, that we know nothing about and have no visibility into? Is that fair?
This is, this would, this is handling these, what would be, almost look like operating items if they weren't capital items. So the things that occur, replacement items that occur every, every year, very similar to in the IT department. They have IT PC replacements, IT equipment replacements. So there's some, there's some elements of the capital budget that look a lot like an operating line item. It's just repetitive items that are done and worked on every single year. And they haven't gone to the, to the detail of saying exactly what locations that they're going to do this work on, and sometimes it comes up during the year.
Counselor Ferguson.
I know you got the one page here, and I think it's under your DCC as well. But I, it's not on here, but I did want to ask you if there's any impact to township of Langley regarding the upgrade of the Northwest Langley Sewage Treatment Plant?
You said it's not on here?
I don't think it's on, no, I don't think it's on here. But I wanted to ask you if there's any impact on township regarding that.
Okay, I'll have to defer to, I'll have to defer to engineering for that? Or is that something we need to get information and bring back? That's a metro asset?
Well, no, no, it's metro, it's definitely metro. And I think that we do collect fees and charges and DCCs and permits and everything from them. So that, we do generate funds for the TOL for that.
I'll flag that one for some follow-up.
You can flag that, okay, thank you very, because I mean, we do gain things from metro projects, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I noticed that the ranking on these are high as opposed to critical. So if they're high but not critical, are there some of them that we could not do this year in order to save money?
Well, when it comes to the water or sewer, because they have their own funding source, the high items, their funding source is adequate, the high items tend to get funded. So it's not as much of a challenge for water and sewer as it is for Universal Services. So there could be like a high 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 that are funded, and the department would argue that they do need to be funded. But in, on the Universal Services side, it's just a little bit, a little bit more of a challenge.
Okay, and you've got a medium item in there. Like, does it need to be on the list?
It could be moved.
That's a quarter of a million.
It's one of, it's one of those kinds of items where if it's, if it's not required, if the contingency isn't required, it won't, it won't be spent. The Capital Works Reserve will stay intact, the money will stay in the reserve.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, but again, my second budget, so I'm trying to, again, learn as much as I can. When we do the presentation, this has shifted a tad since what you sent us on Friday because the sheets in your presentation don't exactly match what we were submitted on Friday. So, I'm just kind of understanding the process. If this is a moving target, I kind of need something that isn't going to start moving around on me.
I was under the impression that they did match, so I'm sorry about that. So, so the package that you received is not jiving with this?
And maybe this is the only one, it's just...
So it's, so similar to the water one, it's just the pre-approval one has been, has been moved up.
I just think, is that the only difference? Yeah, is that the only difference, yeah? So it would be, you know, we would kind of want to know that that's already been pre-approved, right? So I think that that'll circle that as done.
Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just, and I know these come up on a number of these sheets, and I think we did talk about it already, but I'm, maybe I'm just slow in catching on. But when it, when it talks about this unidentified externally funded project, so in here it has down for a million, and quite a few of them show $1 million. So is this like a, is it sort of like a contingency? If we come across a project that we all of a sudden realize during the year that we really need to do this, and we didn't think about it before, and so it's just there for us?
No, the annual sewer utility contingency fund, the one that's registered there as a medium, that would be more like what you've just described. If something comes up that we hadn't foreseen, we could use that fund for this. The unidentified externally funded project, as a placeholder, has no funding source right now. So what it, what it recognizes is that sometimes during the year, staff will apply for, and I use grants as the example. They'll apply for grants, and if they're successful, then there'll be grant funding coming in from the granting agency, but we won't have a project in our capital program to give us just spending authority to spend it. So say, for example, a grant money comes in for $500,000. We will then carve off of the unidentified externally funded projects $500,000 and call it whatever that project is, we'll give it a name of what that grant is. Create the expenditure budget. Because there's one of these, the unidentified externally funded, there's one on the revenue side as well. So we carve out the 500 revenue and expense on both sides and create the project. And now, now staff has the budget authority to actually spend that, that money. So this recognizes that some things will come up during the year that we have, that we had no way of knowing, like a grant or a private contribution of some kind. And it allows us to have the budget expenditure authority because we have to have authority to spend every, every project that we, that we do.
Right, so that's rather than coming to council when it arises, we sort of pre-approve that this could happen?
Yeah, usually these ones will come to council.
They come anyways.
Yeah, usually, yeah, if they're grant funding, unless there's small, small amounts, they'll come.
Karen, let's just talk a little bit about the impact, because some very good questions were raised. For example, some of the infrastructure and upgrades, replacement and upgrades, would in fact have detailed lists in terms of things that would need to be done to them. But they're usually going to be something like a sanitary sewer valve at a certain location or something that, as you say, looks like operating, but it really is capital. More importantly, though, I think the impact of those three categories is, well, if they were not to be there, what would the difference be? Operationally, I don't believe there would be any difference because these are actually being funded from the Capital Works Reserve. So what it would mean then is that if we fund them at this point with Capital Works Reserve money, things come up, they would be repaired or fixed. If they were over a certain threshold, then they'd have to go to council for approval because there's certain limits for transfers. If they're not included, then the money stays in the Capital Works Reserve, does not affect the operating rates whatsoever, so the rates, the discussion isn't impacted. It simply remains in the reserve. But if we wanted to do so, we wanted to deal with the issue, we'd have to come to council with a budget amendment then, to actually, I have authorization to make the expenditure.
Correct.
So that would mean that if there was 50 items, in theory then, in theory, I'm emphasizing this as a bit of exaggeration, there'd be 50 budget amendments required.
Right.
But the bottom line, though, does not impact the operating, the user fee utility amount because at the end of the year, all amounts that are coming from operating that are surplus would likely flow into the surplus and ultimately into the reserve, and then we do this process again.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Richter, oh, sorry, are you done? Counselor Whitmarsh?
I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Richter.
Okay, so I want to go back to this annual sewer utility contingency of $250,000. Now, it says on the actual detailed sheet, which is page 227... Now, it says on the actual detailed sheet, which is page 227, this is a top-up funding request only to 250. This is an annual capital project that seeks funding to cover unbudgeted sewer emergency repairs. And then it goes on to say, "Contingency fund is required to ensure sufficient funds are able, available to cope with emergency sewer situations which may arise. In 2013, operations were required to complete repairs to several Gloucester Force main breaks and spillage." Why are we talking about 2013?
Probably just an example provided.
Okay, but, but that makes me wonder, have there been, has there been any use of this? Like, do we need to keep having it in the budget? Or can we free that up for something else? And the other thing is, why do we have a utility contingency for sewer, not for water?
Madam Chair, the reason why 2013 was referenced is because of the significance of that project and the, the cost implications. These things don't occur every year. It's just a, as, as it said, as it says in the description, the project justification, it is required to top it up such that we do have sufficient funds to take care of significant emergency situations as they arise. And that's why the 2013 example was referenced. And as Ms. Sinclair referenced earlier on, the reason why it wasn't removed was because of the, the minimal impact it would have. And the minimal impact would not even be on the, the budget at all because of the fact that it's a separate utility. But based on direction.
But it's one of those things that we had some problems back in 2013, so we put this little fund in place for future. So my question is now, okay, how much do we actually use this fund every year? Like, do we actually need to leave a quarter of a million there? Or could we redirect that for other projects? Like, if we're having emergency repairs at $25,000, why wouldn't we reduce it down to $25,000, $250,000?
Currently, I would probably take the position that, that this should, should stay there. If it doesn't, if it isn't required, it won't draw from the reserve at all. It won't have any impact on operations. But if it is required, it is there. And I would argue to your earlier question of why isn't there one in water? There probably should be one in water as well. A, a small amount that's, that's for these types of emergencies.
Okay, but, but I still, I don't know the track record. Like, where are the, the historical cost trends that show how much we need to put into that account?
I'll take it up.
That's what I'm looking for.
I'll see if I can find some history on that.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Arnison.
Oh, thank you. Just to follow up on that. So the sewer contingency, my only thought about that is that sometimes we are subject to very severe fines if we have a sewage issue that's going to impact the waterways. And so, and it can happen that if that is not undertaken in a timely manner, there are very significant fines. And so I'm, I'm not arguing what the number should be, but I'm wondering if we want to look at it from a perspective of maybe putting a cap and how much money we're going to accrue into that. And so just keep it at $1 million, or $500,000, or whatever we think is reasonable under our historical analysis of what's required. And then we can take the residual amount and then invest it in other. And personally, I would prefer just to keep it in the whole family of sewer infrastructure, just to keep it in that area so that it could be used there.
Sounds good.
It's a, a good comment, and we'll certainly get the list as was requested previously, but you're, I think you're trying to get to the point we're trying to make. The impact of having that entry there on the user rates is nil, because what we're drawing from is the capital, the Sewer Capital Works Reserve to top something up. It's a fair question to see how much we've used it and what the amounts actually are. But the impact on the users is effectively nil, because it's coming from the Capital Works Reserve. It's effectively expending surplus. As we get into it then, the question arises, well, why is it at that amount? And how often have we used it? That can be looked at. I think the reference to 213 was probably because that was an example of when it was used, and it was needed to be used quite quickly because of the nature of the damage that occurred. Our challenge would be that if it had been, say, $25,000, that just serves as a cap for us to be able to actually use that budget authority. In the worst-case scenario, if it was $25,000 and the expenditure was, say, $100,000, we'd have to come back to council for a budget amendment to actually get the ability to spend it. So it's a timing issue, if you will, in that, in that situation. Now, that may or may not happen, depending on the nature of the issue, because we have other, other things we can actually use. But in that scenario then, you're right. There may be some things that slow us down or requires us to speed it up. Again, because the impact on the ultimate reserve is simply a reallocation of capital, if you will. It's a spending envelope. In my example, it would just be dealt with unless it was over a certain amount that it would need an emergency procurement that council have to authorize in accordance with the policies.
Counselor Davis.
You know, that, uh, I'm going to be a little simpler. I would wonder if with sewer, we, we need, we don't want to, it's a good place to find money, but I would, if something, well, shit hits the fan. I, it's one thing if wa, if you make a, like, excuse me, I shouldn't have maybe said that. It, it's one thing if we have it in the water. If a water break means it's not such, it's water, people drive through water, they walk down the road, oh, we got a water leak. But if it's sewer, and I don't think we're getting more and more bigger pumps, we're getting, anyhow, I would, I would say, um, yeah, you'd think, hey, we, you know, but definitely, if I'm sending direction, I would like to see, maybe you could reduce it to 200, or, you know, I don't even know if that's even logical. But I would, when it comes to sewer, I would just leave sewer the way it is. I would like to see it in there, and we can debate that later, I guess.
Just to clarify one point that you stated was completely accurate, was we can't move the money from within the utilities, from sanitary sewer to water, water to sanitary sewer generally. We can't do that because it's paid for by the users, and the user fees aren't universal. There are some mechanisms to do so in the case of, I'd say, emergency. It can be done. But for all intents and purposes, what's in the reserve stays in the reserve. That's why these are the user pay utilities. And then if there is an issue, we were drawing upon, the issue isn't really the fixing of it, it's the process by which we fix the issue because of the pre-authorized expenditure envelope we have. So it's a bit like saying that you have a, your own self-insurance policy. If the barn burns down, and you've got $50,000, you can fix the barn if it's worth $50,000. But if the barn is worth $200,000, you've got to go and raise the money to fix the barn. That'd be my analogy.
I see, yes, okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, no, I take the point that this, this is sanitary sewer, and it exists within sanitary sewer. I'm, I'm asking about the process, because I'm not going to ask these same questions on every slide. Just don't, don't be too concerned about that. But here, for example, in this particular one, I just added up every project that's top-up funding. And that amounts to 65% of the total budget here. Maybe that's not true on some of the other categories. But that, what that is to me is 65% of what's being approved by council, we don't have any visibility into at all. And that's a rather large percentage, just in theoretical terms. So I'll just leave that there for information. It may not impact this particular category very much, but I think it's something that might be more interesting on some of the others. To see percentages to that degree that are just top-up funding for unknown things. Thanks.
Mr. Nam just passed me some information that shows the history of using this. I don't have the details as to what the projects were, but in 2015, we didn't use it. 2016, we didn't. 2017, we used $89,000. 2018, we didn't use it. In 2019, we used $243,000. All right. And solid waste, these two items?
Yes, Counselor Ferguson.
I have to ask you about, now, we already have a full complement of collection carts, that's correct? And now these are ones that are broken or something like that? Or, or we have to replace them, if I may? Or were these new additions to new growth?
So the first line item is additions for new growth. So that one, that one identifies that we annually purchase and deliver roughly 4,000 wheeled collection carts, 2,000 garbage carts, and 2,000 collection, organic carts for new residents in solid waste collection areas. So the first one is for growth. And the second one recognizes that we, we need to replace items on the carts, either the RFID scanner, which has a GPS for waste disposal trucks, or those carts that are damaged or stolen.
Okay, because I know I've even had to have mine, I like to always use a good example. I've had to have mine replaced, because you've got to watch how much weight you put, mostly in the green one. Like, you know, when I was putting all those heavy rocks and things like that, that probably wasn't a, no, I wasn't putting rock. That wasn't a, you have to be careful. We have to educate the public, that's all.
Yes, definitely.
Because otherwise, you can see, it doesn't take long to increase. We talked about education before, and we'll just continue talking about that. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, while we're on the topic of the garbage carts, why are we jumping from 85 to 145? I was just in the process of trying to figure out how many more. Are we going to be growing that much in a year that we need to add? What does it say, 21, 25? That we have to jump from 4,000 new carts up to 6,800 new carts?
Is that some measure there?
Okay. And the annual equipment replacement, it's, again, this is top-up funding to $50,000. But it, it, it's done to replace items such as RFID scanner, GPS for waste disposal trucks. I thought the waste disposal trucks were contractors. Why do we have to provide GPS for them?
I think the RFID scanner is just being described, what that is, is a GPS for waste disposal. Is that correct? Yeah, so the RFID scanner is something affixed to the carts that the trucks can determine where the carts are. So if you reported your cart stolen, they'd be able to see that it's a block away, somebody picked it up.
Okay, but if we're contracting the service out, why are we providing GPS for them?
Well, we buy the carts, so we're, we own the, the cart infrastructure and everything affixed to them. The township buys the carts, and then the contractor does, provides a service of collecting and disposing.
Okay, but why do they need GPS then? I'm not getting it. If you contract the service out, why aren't they providing the GPS? The contractors?
As part of the solid waste collection contract, the township has sort of provided the GPS cost for it. If we don't provide it to the contractor, then we'll build that into the contract price and charge us back for it. Just so the township owns the GPS infrastructure and can advise the contractor in terms of how they want to collect it and what information to put.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the first of one of our larger categories, so I'll, I'll just leave that slide if, actually, what I should do, if you, if you turn to this slide in your package and then look on the next page, you'll see the, the list of items that are outside the funding envelope. So this shows you the list of all items inside the funding envelope. And the next page will show you the items outside. And unfortunately, we can't show them all up at once.
So I have a question about surplus from MAP, Arrival Point in Plaza. How did that come about? $125,000, it's second from the bottom.
That one, I believe, was just something additional that was identified. To include additional, additional parking and improved pedestrian access signage landscaping in addition to what was contemplated last year in the, in the larger overall project that was defined. The project will also complete a ticket booth and control gate feature on the west side of the ground stand, wiring and communications upgrades in 2020. So these are the wire, sorry, these are the wiring and communications upgrades.
Okay, Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up on that. I'm not sure, not sure, I'm not sure, I didn't really understand the answer there. Because on that MAP, Arrival Point in Plaza, I was going to ask that as well, for some other comments. First of all, when am I going to hear the end of MAP in regards to the budget? I want to see the back of that project in regards to our budgeting process. And so is this just gone over budget on this particular item? Because the capital sheet from 2019, which I have in front of me for that, is basically the unidentical description, or very close to a close identical description.
I think the wiring and communications, as I was reading it, I realized when I got to the wiring and communications upgrades in 2020 that that was the difference. That last line in the first, in the paragraph of the first box.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me. It's like 50 sheets away or something like that.
I think as I was reading it, I thought this sounds familiar, and then I got to the wiring and communications.
Okay, all right. So we can just put communication upgrades on this? And then, can I get a promise? I guess you won't be here to make good on this promise that next year I don't see anything more regarding McLeod Athletic Park and previous council's unfunded commitments?
I'll get, I'll get out to make that promise.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodward, you should be aware that Mr. Newfield will be happy to make that promise because he retires at the same time.
Also retiring as well, yeah. No, I'm gathering that, yeah, next year we'll see something else in regards to these unfunded commitments from previous councils. Thanks.
So in your, in your package, I believe, it is easier to look at.
Counselor Woodward is not done.
No, I have another one.
Okay.
The Yorcson Creek Bridge, that's obviously going to catch our attention, being one of the larger numbers on the page. So I think I've, maybe for council's information, we can get some understanding of exactly what that is.
So it's an existing wood goulam beam style, beam style bridge with a prefab steel bridge component. The existing bridge is showing signs of decay and was reported as unsafe by a consultant. Need to replace the bridge with a prefab steel bridge to maintain this pedestrian trail connection in Walnut Grove. And beyond that, I'll have to defer to Mr. Newfield.
All right, so that, that's not anticipated. That's something new that's come up based on an asset failing. So this would be down to some of those reserves around dealing with assets that prematurely fail. Maybe I'll consider some options around this particular one. I also want to just note that in, just looked it up, in 2019, the park's request for capital was $8 million, and this year it's 3.5. And that's mainly due to Yorcson Community Park being pulled out. Can I get some idea of where we are with pulling that out? So if we stop for this year on, on that multi-year capital project, what's not going to get done in Yorcson Community Park this year specifically?
So the item for twenty twenty that's listed is the additional lit parking north of Eighty-Second Avenue is required in 2020, and design of the two washroom buildings, and construction of one washroom building to service the spray park. So three washroom buildings and a lit parking, lit additional parking is what's scheduled for that funding in 2020.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, the Marina Park boat launch. I'm wondering, aren't we in the process of getting some redevelopment on that particular piece of property? Like, could this boat launch be held off until the redevelopment occurs and included in that package then?
So the boat launch is in very poor condition. The launch area is undermined, and the concrete is broken, cracked beyond repair. So this one is creating a safety hazard for launching and loading boats.
It's saying a potential safety hazard, not a definite safety hazard. But I guess what my question is, isn't that whole strip of property going to be redeveloped in the relatively near term?
The Marina Park area is not scheduled for redevelopment. The question is, can the boat launch be moved to a location that's probably, has better access and egress? The answer to that is, it could be. Our challenges are just the cost associated with developing the new boat launch, if there's actually a need for it. Also, given the fact that our friends in KFAN, Quantland First Nation, have several locations that could be used as a boat launch, but that may have some charges or fees associated with it. So I think this amount is really to stabilize the boat launch for the interim, next five or ten years or so as matters progress. Mr. Newfeld, anything further on that?
I think the long-range plan for the existing boat launch is to have it continued to be used for car topper, a launching of canoes and things, so even if distant surface needs to be upgraded to be safe for pedestrian use, they're launching.
Thank you.
Are there questions on the slide?
The Jackman Park Wetlands Development Phase Two. So this is really to improve the disc golf course that opened up down there that's been very popular. It's not really... It's related to that, but not really related to that. Is there any thought? I'd heard some discussion this past week over an outdoor gun club going down in that same area. And if it is, it's going to be very disruptive, I would think, to this park users.
The suggestion has been for actually for a property just slightly north of that to be used as a potential range area. It has been anticipated it would likely be indoor, but it could have some outdoor component. But this is one of the sites, that being the site north of this, that the local club has looked as a potential relocation area. The timing and likelihood of that is far too early, because I believe they're still in the site consideration stage and the facility consideration stage. Because ideally, whatever they did, they would like to do indoors if it can work from a, I guess, from a regulatory and, I guess, usage point of view.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
I just want to point out, you seem to have Milner Parking Lot twice. It's got the same page number but different amount, funded and unfunded. So I'm assuming maybe changed the last couple of minutes there. Are we anticipating that funded or unfunded?
That one is... Part of it is funded, and part is unfunded. So, yeah, line one fifty-six up top, or page one fifty-six. So that's... You can see, if you look across the line, that's where the operating revenue ran out. If you move over to the column that shows operating revenue.
Capital sheet now, that makes more sense. So we would be finishing that next year?
We would be... It would come up again.
We would be putting this money aside. So this would be a multi-year?
It's actually... Yeah, I suppose you could look at it that way. It didn't make it because our items were over a million dollars on the other slide, but this could be a multi-year one. It is now by virtue of not having enough money in 2020 unless we were to find funding for it.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that. Thanks.
And I'm assuming we were looking at our books, so we were seeing this as well. So the next one is transportation. And in your book, it also shows up on all on page, if you look on page two thirty-one. Any questions on that one?
Counselor Woodward.
I wanted to ask for a little more detail than what's on the capital sheet for the arterial widening, Two Hundred Street from sixty-six to sixty-eight. Trying to find the capital sheet.
Two fifty-six. Construction of road widening on Two Hundred from sixty-sixth to Seventieth Avenue to seven lanes, including median, curb, gutter, sidewalk, cycling lanes to provide for traffic flow efficiency and to meet demands.
Yep, so I want to highlight this for council. This is a multi-year, again, a multi-year funded project, and all from future DCCs this year, and anticipated to come out of the DCC program in future years. Maybe staff can clarify the land issue for that. What are we widening and how are we doing that?
I will have to confirm this, Madam Chair, but I believe this is an area that the land may be already available, dedicated, I think. Sixty-sixth to Seventieth.
So it doesn't have to be answered right now. They could get back to us on what this is and where this is exactly before funding design. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, and I also want to raise, I wanted to ask about public spaces' waste receptacles. So, trying to think where that's...
That is a five-year plan.
Yeah.
Year three.
And this is year three.
Actually, I don't actually have any questions on that. I made a mistake. The other thing I wanted to raise was the Two Oh-Eight Street Corridor project involving Eighty-Third and Two Oh-Eighth, where that is also multi-year.
All right.
So the three million that's being requested in 2020, one million is for detailed design and construction from sixty-eight to seventy-six, and then two point one around Eighty-Third and Eighty-Fourth. Now, what I've heard is that maybe we can get an understanding of what that's going to look like at the end, prior to funding it, specifically at Eighty-Third and Eighty-Fourth, exactly what's going to be constructed and when. And where I'm going with that is in regards to whether or not there's somebody in that specific area assembling land, and the road pattern may or may not change. I wanted to get that confirmed. And whether or not we could potentially forego some of the design on those other sections, that one million, until we determine that we're actually going to potentially work on that in terms of where we're going to actually maybe fund to do the work before we design it and have that conversation. So I wanted to flag that, and maybe put a portion of those design funds towards some improvements to the Willoughby Community Hall in regards to paving and other interfaces to a development to the east, which never seems to proceed. And just finishing that off for them as part of council, maybe funding that from some portion of this and foregoing that design for now. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yes, my question is around the annual commuter cycling improvements, and that's sheet two thirty-eight. So on this, it says here that there's a request to have an annual fund for construction of bicycle lanes. Eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a fifty-fifty cost share with TransLink. So a couple of questions. One is, is there a limit from TransLink on the total amount that they would share at the fifty-fifty rate?
I'll defer to... There is a limit?
There is a limit.
Is this the maximum?
Limit? This is the limit.
And I'm guessing it's probably not guaranteed for every year, but we put it in for as long as the program. They'll tell us if they're going to discontinue it. Sometimes that happens.
Right, okay. So do we have a detailed plan of what this eight hundred and twenty thousand on an annual basis will be used for and where these cycling improvements are going to happen? Is that something that's been identified, or is it just, we can get four hundred and ten, so let's just put eight twenty and we'll make it up as we go?
I believe we do have a plan. I remember it... Sorry, Ram, go ahead. I remember it coming up in an open house, looking at it.
Yeah, there is a plan, Madam Chair. We do have a long-term cycling plan that council has endorsed, and we're making progress, albeit small, because of the significant costs involved.
So, okay, so current... Thank you for that information. We... So we currently have been spending money on a cycling plan, but we haven't had it in the budget? Is this... So this is a new budget item?
No, we have had it in the budget.
We have had it in the budget. And so this amount of eight twenty has been a consistent amount?
I believe last year it was five-ten.
Including the money from TransLink?
It was five-ten and five-ten.
Oh, five-ten and five-ten. So TransLink has reduced their contribution?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't recall all the details of the plan. Maybe at some point, we could, council could see the plan again and exactly what it looks like annually, and how we'll be improving, so that'd be helpful. Thank you. Actually, there was another one that I wanted to touch based on... Yeah, the very first item, the Annual Climate Action Strategy Implementation Fund. So this fund on two thirty-two, I know that we talked the number of about three hundred and fifty thousand before. Is this the same climate action number that we've been using for three fifty was the number we've been using on climate, and now this says four hundred? Is this the same thing, or is this something different than the three fifty that we had talked about?
The operating three... Oh, okay. Karma's just saying that there is an amount in operating that is three oh five, but I don't know.
Five, okay.
Can you confirm, Denise? Has this always been four hundred?
Yes.
This one has. Yeah. Okay. So this, a new request.
So this is a new request for climate action strategy, dealing specifically with transportation?
Right.
So what, maybe I read, what sort of...
I'm thinking...
What kind of improvements do we make with four hundred thousand dollars in transportation that deal specifically with climate?
Was it in the report that went to council?
Maybe I'll put an extra one here. This fund is a new one that was related to the climate action strategy that staff are currently developing and will bring forward to council in June of this year. This money is required to undertake most of our corporate improvements. So over the last couple of years, we've been getting a lot of attachments on our buildings of where we can be more energy efficient. We have another fund for capital, which is three fifty, which council approved a policy back in April of 2017, to fund those projects. But however, the three fifty we currently have in that is not sufficient enough to undertake all the projects.
Okay, so this item here, I understood you say this is to look at our buildings and sort of energy related to our buildings. Is that correct?
For this year, for 2020, that's where the money will be allocated.
Even though this falls into the category of transportation? So this isn't just charging stations and these sort of things in our municipal buildings? This is actually managing, dealing with the actual energy use of our buildings?
I remember it will be dealt with upgrades to, you know, mechanical units to make them more energy efficient, some heat recovery, and some lighting upgrades.
Okay.
So this one could be more properly categorized in facilities, I think is where you're...
Okay, well, it's just part of my question, because it's just confusing to me when it's under transportation, exactly what it's used for. That's related to transportation, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Good question.
Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, yes, thank you. First of all, I wanted to, if you could, I guess, with the next meeting, you wrote all that stuff down regarding the comments for Counselor Woodward? Because I was trying to write it all, if I got it all. And that was regarding the roads in the Willoughby area. The second one, my question, is the Horn Pit. Maybe you can comment on that, the reclamation, where we're at with it? Because it's in our, it's item number two in our strategic priorities, Horn Pit Housing Project, I guess, Options. And I just wondered where we're at. Do you or the administration could both comment?
Currently, it's under a bit of a stormwater analysis. The location has been filled with structural fill. And the first hurdle is to determine now with that, the drainage patterns, and to determine if we have to use part of that area for a storm detention pond, or whether we can use some of the setback areas or the repairing areas by increasing the water flow to them. When that process is done, then we can begin to advance some of the housing initiatives. We're being mindful, though, and in fact, we're trying to go certainly no faster than concurrently, but perhaps secondary to the Brookswood Neighborhood Planning Process to see what's actually there, where that's going to take us, because we want to make sure that the area complies with neighborhood plan. We have for some time recognized that a portion of the site would be quite usable for potential light industrial uses because of its proximity to Campbell Heights, but we've refrained from entertaining that until we've seen what the outcome of the neighborhood planning process is. Right now, we're suspecting that it may be best used for various levels of housing, various levels of density, which could include things from single-family lots to townhomes, even to some, I guess, higher-density housing, mobile home parks potentially, so that it could actually provide some affordability.
Okay, so if, I'm getting back into engineering. If some of that land, which was to be used for stormwater detention, would that mean that the Township of Langley would have the benefit of using that for future developments as develops need to have in place a storm detention?
I think the work being done now will help identify that, whether it's just for the site or whether it's for the overall area. Our best understanding at the moment is it would likely just be for the site. So it could be simply a net loss to the site if that was the case, and that could affect the housing mix.
Okay, but that would be determined in the future.
That's the work that's also, I think, underway. It will determine, I guess, hopefully by the spring or late spring, after having a season of rain in terms of what's going to be needed.
And last question, how big is the site again?
I think gross was around sixty acres, but net turns out to be more like thirty-five to forty.
And to be cutting environmental and storm drainage, you can use the two, depending on getting a glean back. But that all has to be determined in the future. Thank you.
I have a question about the ICBC unidentified funding, and it just occurred to me that, of course, the ICBC rates have changed. Has that had an impact on our vehicles or how we, our rates at all?
I don't have a... I have to get back to you on that question specifically about of our rates. They go up every year, but whether or not they were, they went up more than the norm this year, I don't have at the forefront of my head. This item is for, seems like an odd place for this item to be. This item is actually for capital, safety, capital, road safety projects that ICBC helps fund. So it comes in as grant funding from ICBC to fund small little pockets of where we make improvements that they agree with.
Okay.
They give us the funding. But I'll get back to you on that.
The fleet, it might come up under fleet, I would imagine.
Correct. And to your question, it's having an impact, but it's a bit of a work in progress, because you've gone from having vehicle insurance, if you will, to driver insurance, that's the best way to describe it. And of course, that depends upon not only the history, the record of the driver, but also their age and demographics. Because as we're seeing, and this is just a generic statement, the insurance risk seems to be higher for younger drivers than less for older drivers. And that dynamic is working its way through the system. So depending upon how many parties may be using an individual vehicle could very much affect the driving of the insurance rate for that specific vehicle. And it's proving to be a bit of a challenge for all municipalities or any organization that has pool vehicles, where there could be multiple users.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, great, thanks. Page two forty, airport repaving of a million dollars over two years. I'm just wondering why that's in the transportation utility. Shouldn't it be under airport? Because I always thought the airport was self-sustaining. And I don't understand why general revenues, i.e. all taxpayers, are paying for their repaving.
I believe the reason for that is that this, there's what's called groundside and airside, and the airside, the airport takes care of, and I believe this is groundside, but I'll defer to Mr. Sepeh to confirm, which means outside of the airport, like along the edge of the roads and different things. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and on the unfunded items, page two sixty-one, the off-street parking lot, Alder Grove Fraser Highway at Two Seventy-Second. I'm assuming this is for repaving where the Alder Inn currently sits. And if that is the case, why do we not have it in funded?
So it does say, site preparation of a, and paving of a parking area in Alder Grove for overflow parking to address current parking issues at the ACUCC.
It's not the Alder Inn?
It is not specifically that building, Madam Chair, but it's in the vicinity, in that area.
Okay. And then also on the unfunded item on page two seventy-six, the traffic calming projects. And we keep getting more and more requests for traffic calming. I'm not thinking we shouldn't be funding them because they are important safety needs in the community.
So I will flag that one?
Yes, please.
Counselor Long.
Ah, thank you. Going back to the Two Oh-Eighth Corridor, and I'm on page, what is it here, two thirty-six. Maybe, can we get an explanation again about, so there's this section between Eighty-Third and Eighty-Fourth, which is in front of the Willoughby Hall. 83rd and 84th, which is in front of the Willoughby Hall. Now, this was an issue last year, because there was money in... DCC money set aside to fix that little stretch. What is the status of... Is that going to get done finally this year, or what's happening with that? That's in front of Willoughby Hall. And my understanding was development behind it. The Athenry put quite a bit of DCC funds in to take care of that, and that's in front of our... Not our building, but it's... The Willoughby Hall is a community hall, so it won't be development that's paying for that, other than through the DCC.
Per the write-up, it looks like that is included in the final year's large amount of $23 million.
You mean, wouldn't be done until 2024?
That's what it's looking like. Would you concur with that?
There are sections that could be done based on the fact that the dedication that's required is already there and available, and this is to address those sections as well, which would be done before 2024.
Will those be done this year, then?
Subject to funding, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, so people have asked some of these other questions, which is good. I was going to suggest maybe some of the comments. Rather than spreading out climate into every category, maybe we can consider creating a climate category and view and see all the climate-related projects that we're funding across all departments, rather than have them spread out all over the place. Because, I mean, in your operating summary from last week, I think you included 0.3%. Would that have included this annual climate strategy implementation fund in that number?
It was 305,000 and...
So, would not have then?
No.
So, when we see sort of climate strategy stuff, 0.3%, that's not really reflecting all of the climate strategy stuff?
It is the operating, which is typically plans and reviews.
Right. Yeah, so I just want to get to a point where I want to know roughly what all the climate strategy stuff is costing us.
Sure.
And what it's going to be doing, rather than just various projects, which is what the summary says.
I think we could...
Fund some projects. Well, I want to know what those are before they're funded.
Right. Creating, like we created the multi-year slides, we could create a climate slide that has everything.
Counselor Arnison?
Yes, I agree. It's great that all these questions are being asked. I did have one of mine answered already regarding traffic calming, because it's currently unfunded, and I think that it's really important. It's on page 276 in that category. It's a nominal amount of money, and the priority is in front of schools and in playgrounds. My other question, then, is to follow up on Counselor Woodward's question regarding the climate action. So, if you're going to create a slide that captures all of the different climate action activities, I would like to make sure that there isn't any overlap between categories that have now been included, that were previously considered, such as bicycle networking, for example, as a climate action, because sometimes there can be already money and funding and a whole initiative around that. I would strictly like to look at all the new initiatives, the initiatives that were non-existing in the past that are related to this new category, because otherwise, I feel it won't give a fair representation necessarily of what the new category funding is for. And still, and I concur, we do need more details around some of these different activities, because I don't think it's... Especially with the new category, it's very clear exactly what some of them could look like, and that would be helpful in the discussion.
Would it be helpful to have a slide that identifies the new initiatives and then a section, say, at the bottom, was existing?
Yes, I think so, because it just makes sense, because you're adding another layer, but you don't want to necessarily include all the other ones that have already, you know, been undertaken in the past.
Would have been funded regardless of this.
Exactly, yeah.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes. Almost five years ago, we spent time, considerable time, I remember, on council, talking about Old Yale Road. And I notice it's still in here. It's still identified as high. Just going to the sheet, there's, you know, it talks about it, poor and deteriorating, and there's an elementary school there needing some pedestrian upgrades. There's a number of things there. So, not that I'm suggesting anything for this budget, but I'm just wondering, when does something go from high to critical in terms of a road like that? It was five years ago, we had this conversation, made a decision, and now it's sitting there. So, at this... And obviously, we're going to have budget challenges, and budget challenges are quite common. So, we could be here 10 years from now and still have Old Yale Road listed as high, sitting on there. So, I'm just wondering, just sort of some thoughts around how we get to those kind of items, or if we ever do. Maybe just comment from staff.
268.
268 is the sheet.
I'll begin, and Ram can provide his thoughts as well. In that particular category and that location, it could be many, many, many years before it ever reaches the point where it becomes... Where there's enough funds to undertake it. The exception would be if there was a failure. So, if we have a road where there's, say, and I don't believe this applies there, but if there's a culvert or a creek or something of that nature that collapses, then that would move it up the list to get that section finished at least. The general nature of the road itself, being still passable, still being quite solid, but still being incredibly bumpy and incredibly challenging for vehicles, that in and of itself likely wouldn't take it to the critical phase. So, I think it would be a... It could be quite some time unless there's some policy direction to accelerate that. And of course, if that occurs, it's what falls off the list. But Mr. Seifi may want to elaborate on what the triggering event might be to actually do some remedial work on Old Yale Road.
Certainly, there could be some immediate work, but I think if you go back to the question that Counselor Whitmarsh was posing, was how do we elevate something like this from high to critical? I don't believe this situation is one that could at any point be categorized by staff as being critical, based on the fact that there are similar types of roads in municipality that have the same condition. What makes this particular section different is its historic values. So, the condition of the road is not desirable, but it doesn't pose any safety concerns. It actually could be argued that it helps vehicles slow down and not speed, and therefore could be argued that it's actually a safety precautionary measure. So, I don't know if at any point we would categorize it as critical, as I said, based on that and based on the significant cost. It requires several years of funding, and unfortunately, the reality is, by the time that we look at it now, the estimate could actually no longer be valid because of its age. The estimate was done, as Counselor Whitmarsh referenced, several years ago.
Right. Okay, that's just interesting. Thank you.
Counselor Long?
I can't believe that Mr. Seifi is using my logic, Bob Long logic, with the speeding. And you can apply that... Where's Fergie? To 24th Avenue, too, right? You guys, we want to improve that street, but that's just going to increase the speeding on it as well. So, we haven't had any complaints of speeding on Old Yale Road, that's for sure. I just wondered, Madam Chair, if you could flag that we go back to the development funding. I don't know if I missed the explanation about the difference on the...
What page is that?
2018. On the slide presentation, it's 23, but it doesn't have to be now. I just wanted you to flag that for...
Okay.
For a discussion on the difference on that graph.
Development funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you don't want to answer to that? You just want to flag?
Well, when you're... I just don't want us to be squirreling around here, but when it's appropriate.
But we only have... It's almost 20 after, and...
Is it appropriate to get a quick one on that, then? Can you tell us what that graph is, or you still need to look that up?
Why is it so high?
Is this with respect to the contributed asset?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, Mr. Nam had actually looked it up on the break, and we do want to confirm this, but it looks like it was... Was it three Vesta? Two or three?
Two.
Two, two large Vesta developments. This is the... For everybody else, this is the contributed assets, which is categorized as land acquisitions on the graph of items turned over to the township after...
Oh, like their detention pond?
It's some large acreage of land that they turned over to the township from the Vesta development.
Must be detention pond. Is it?
Does it?
Yeah.
We were going to look at the details of exactly what it was and bring it back, but just as a quick answer, that was the...
Thank you.
The gist of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else on roads?
Just with only about seven minutes left, what would you suggest?
See what's next.
Because I think we need to break for five minutes before 2:30, so...
Right. Okay, I could probably get through a couple more slides, and... Well, let me see.
Okay.
Maybe one.
And if we could do maybe this section, then we can discuss future meeting dates. I think we may need a bit of time for that.
Sounds good. So, this slide. So, this is a list of items that come up for replacement in our fleet, and the fleet manager will look at these items. It's not just... They come up to their number of years of useful life, and for that reason, he's going to replace them all. He looks at them all and says, can they go longer? And if they can go longer, he lets them go longer. Some of them are on the list that may have... May should have gone a bit longer, but they're in such... Maybe in bad shape, so they need to be replaced sooner. So, this is a list that's reviewed by the fleet manager of the items that will be coming up for replacement or that are coming up for replacement, and they're all funded from the equipment replacement reserve, so there's no impact on property taxes from this one, other than indirectly through the fleet or operation that we have.
Oh, Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you. This one is quite self-evident. The only thing is that I know that there's a lot of oversight and planning in terms of replacement. I just want to make sure that these replacements, and maybe it's something that could be flagged for more details, the degree to which any of these trucks/vans or other vehicles can be electrified, or at least made hybrid at this point. I know there was a reference in some other materials to some of them coming to the end of their useful life, but I just want to make sure that we're on an appropriate trajectory that way. Thank you.
Good. And that's that one. And this probably would be a slide that will have quite a bit of conversation, so we may want to bring this back to the next meeting. If we cut off here, that would probably make some sense.
Okay.
And then you want to... Mark, you want to have some conversation about timing? So, we have... February 3 is our date that we have scheduled right now, 2:30 on February 3, right after your meetings with Mr. McIntosh.
So, Madam Chair, with your assistance and with Karen's assistance, so right now, I think we are on slide 44 of 68, 69?
42.
About 42, that's right. Put my glasses back on. And we... So, that would put us approximately two-thirds of the way, I think, through. Karen, I'm now looking for your guidance. And some of the slides coming up are sort of options in regards to capital in terms of things that could happen, which will probably warrant some additional discussion. So, my thought... Pardon me, my thought process is that it's quite likely now that we are not going to... We're going to need more time, I guess, beyond February 3, and that would put us our next session then to February 10. And we're thinking that we would repeat today then on February 10, which would be about a 10:30 start going to approximately 2:30, and then continue at that point to see where it takes us. Karen, in the meantime, can determine some additional dates for the public consultation, how those work. What was constraining us previously as to public consultation was the thought we were restricted to a Monday, Tuesday, or a council meeting day. If we have consensus that we can look beyond those dates, it'll make it much easier for us and allow us, again, additional time to spend, more good time on the budget, as these discussions are quite helpful. Even the information today will provide us with a lot of time to reflect and try to adjust things as we go forward. The questions themselves will take some time, I think, to review and provide answers to. In today's distribution list, there's been some additional material supplied to questions that were asked throughout the last week, and we continue to work away on additional questions that have not yet been answered. So, I guess my point is twofold. Can we proceed then? Notionally, at least, to advance on February 10, and can we also notionally proceed with the concept that the public open houses or, I guess, information sessions not be restricted to council meeting dates, so that we could actually have some more dates to look at?
Was a lot. Okay. So, do I need a motion for any of those suggestions? And I do have a question from Counselor Richter.
A motion is not as much as consensus or objections to it if it causes some challenges. That's what we're trying to figure out, because we'll then, again, continue to adjust the dates.
Okay. So, does February 10 sound like that's going to work for everybody? Okay. Everyone's nodding. So, February 10. So, Counselor Richter, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question here on slide 51, which we haven't gotten to yet. But I want to make sure I understand what's going on here. So, the base from last time, which is 4.12, you're saying reduce it to 3.86, and then do we add the 5.29 into the 3.86? Or do we take the last one, which is the 9.7, and just bring it down to 8.15?
Sorry, which page are you on?
I'm looking at slide 51.
51.
It's under options.
Oh, okay, we dropped ahead. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. I just... Because I just want to put a... 8.15 is not acceptable to me. I don't know how the rest of council feels.
Karen, so, no, quite, quite well-understood. This reflects some adjustments from previous information provided. The first line simply refers to the elimination of having to pay the taxes on some of the property acquisitions, so it's been reduced. The rest still outline categories that we need to review to determine what the appropriate mix is. So, for example, again, while you can total them, our goal is not to total them, is to actually reapportion them, reapply them, and that's where the comments we're getting are quite helpful in terms of where to look. Some of the detailed discussion that'll occur next week are capital adjustments that could actually bring some of these numbers down, but could have an impact on borrowing. Likewise, we're looking at alternate revenue sources that might help, and we still have to consider the classification of the nondiscretionary, or if you will, service reductions in terms of what can be done to put things back into the balance that we seek. So, it's not that that is recommended or suggested. These are just mathematical corrections that are being done to give you the current state as we try to then take these numbers in, effectively, what we're hearing collectively is reduce them.
Okay. Well, I know we tried the part last time about bringing it down to a specific tax increase, and that was not successful. But I do want to remind that the cost of living out there is 2% right now. So, 5.29 is way too high, and 8.15 is way too high as well, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So, I guess we'll conclude this budget, and I just want to thank you to Karen and to all the staff for all the details that you provided us today. So, do we have any other business? Seeing none, motion to terminate. There we go. Oh, oh.
Offer something?
Yes.
If anybody has questions similar to the ones that have been asked, is it okay for me to say, please send them to me, and I can bring the answers back?
Yes, it is totally okay to say that.
When you get a request from the council, can we all get the answer?
Yes.
That'd be great.
That would make sense.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, till 2:30.
Oh, we got a four-minute break.